Oh, it's suddenly, but it's whack.
Glad you're here too, brother.
Cause I had, uh, Lori said to pray for me.
You had who?
Lori Kelsey.
Oh, she's a good lady.
But I haven't seen, I don't see her here, so.
Well, it ain't six yet. It is a six years.
There's always a ram in the bush.
There's always a ram in the bush, you never know.
That's it. We didn't talk about that.
Always a ram in the bush.
That was right at kitchen.
Pastor, how you doing?
How are you, sir? The issue that we were talking about had taken up.
Okay. Maybe they resolved it before. But that's all right. I'll sit up here, I'll sit where I can be seen.
Test, 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 test. Where'd she go? I know his track over. Oh, there she is. I thought Mike was here, did I not see him? I did. Thought I heard him.
Your meeting of this Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six oh something PM. Six oh eight PM per Verizon Wireless. Uh, we begin with the invocation. We give the floor to Councilman Parker to introduce this evening's invocation.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to introduce to everybody Pastor Laura Kelsey of the First Presbyterian Church in Pontiac. She will give us our invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Oh Lord, we thank you for gathering us here this evening. We thank you, oh Lord, for the Pontiac City Council and our mayor. We ask you, Lord, that you bless them and keep them, that you guide the discussions and the decision-making this evening. That all the decisions that are made are by your will, through your discernment, and that you help us all to hear what folks are saying. That you help us to have open ears, open hearts, that our backs are down and that our, and that our eyes and ears and hearts are opened. We ask you, Lord, this evening, that you guide the people gathered here and all those who are experiencing this meeting online, that they may hear clearly what is being said and next steps for our city. We ask you, Lord, to bless the city of Pontiac and bless us all as we seek to come together in unity and in peace with justice on our hearts, and that all we do may be for the betterment of our community and each of its citizens. We ask this in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance is declared. United States of America, and as with the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We remain standing for a moment of silence. We remember all those that in our neighborhoods, our families, our congregations, our, our places of work, and in your families and in your circles of life who you have unfortunately had to say goodbye to. We also specifically remember again Monica Kennedy, Kyle Milton, Malik Milton, and her family, uh, who said goodbye to her and in the community, uh, celebration of life, remembering, uh, the beauty and joy of her and her beloved sons, uh, that took place this weekend as well. Please join us for a moment of silence. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Present.
Rutherford.
Mr. President, you have quorum. Thank you. Quorum being established, uh, could I please have a motion to authorize the excusing of Councilwoman Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by Councilman Goodman that we excuse Councilwoman Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we approve this evening's consent agenda for the community's benefit that's not following along with hard copy agendas. It includes three sets of meeting minutes. The January twenty-third Law in the Court Subcommittee meeting, the January twenty-third Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee meeting, and then the most recent, uh, regular meeting of this city council, January twenty-fourth. Roll call on, uh, approval of the consent agenda, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. Um, the, uh, authorization is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That item is before us. Any discussion? Any amendments, additions, corrections, questions? Hearing no discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Present.
Rutherford.
Mr. President, you have quorum. Thank you. Quorum being established, uh, could I please have a motion to authorize the excusing of Councilwoman Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker and seconded by Councilman Goodman that we excuse Councilwoman Rutherford from the meeting for personal reasons. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. Um, the, uh, authorization is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That item is before us. Any discussion? Any amendments, additions, corrections, questions? Hearing no discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. The agenda is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That item is before us. Any discussion? Any amendments, additions, corrections, questions? Hearing no discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. Um, the, uh, authorization is approved. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington. That item is before us. Any discussion? Any amendments, additions, corrections, questions? Hearing no discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. We are now at our first special presentation of the evening. Um, we have been honored and blessed as the city of Pontiac, all sixty-one thousand of us who call it home today, but the tens of thousands of people that have lived here over the decades have been directly benefited by the selfless, talented, and persistent hard work of Mr. Jack Cady. And he served a very long tenure as a direct City of Pontiac employee and retired many moons ago, but then came back and worked through the NOAC and Frost Firm located here in Pontiac, directly, uh, serving public works and engineering purposes for their city, uh, and then being embedded right here in City Hall to help with operations. Uh, he truly is, uh, a blessing to Pontiac. There are thousands of Pontiac families who are safer because of the work he's done, um, who, uh, many coworkers who have had a happier experience because of his collegiality and, and being a positive force within City Hall, even during difficult days when, uh, staffing was hollowed out. Uh, Jack Cady has helped and the glue to keep things together. And we are really blessed to be able to celebrate him this evening. Uh, I want to give the floor to the mayor and to those, uh, from the city administration that would like to reflect on it. And, uh, we will celebrate and venerate Mr. Cady as a group, and then we will have a resolution in his honor read, voted on, and then presented, and then we can allow him and his family to scatter out into the, the cold and not have to stay, um, burdened to the entirety of the city council meeting. You've done fifty-plus years enough, uh, so we don't need to, uh, make you stay at the bottom of the agenda. Um, we are really grateful that you took the time, you and your family, to be here to celebrate. So I give the floor now to Mayor Grimal.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, Jack, I, first of all, I, I know you and I have only worked together for a year, so, uh, in the scheme of things, uh, that's, uh, a very short time period considering your tremendous and, and long-time track record of service to the city here, but you've always been just a delight to work with. You have great engineering insights, of course. You have amazing and unparalleled institutional memory and, uh, history with the city. Uh, I know that we're going to be keeping you on speed dial as issues come up where we need to tap that institutional memory. But what, what's really impressed me, Jack, is that everybody speaks highly of you, and that's pretty rare, especially in, uh, towns like Pontiac where, uh, not everyone sees eye to eye on issues. And so for the fact, uh, that people unanimously, truly unanimously, uh, speak highly of you, respect you for your professional acumen, but also think the world of you personally in terms of you always having a kind demeanor, always having a friendly countenance, that really speaks volumes about who you are and what your character is. And I just, it's, it's almost unfathomable, uh, to some of us that you've worked either directly as a city employee to the city or as a contractor for the city for over fifty-three years now. I mean, it's pretty astounding. And... You, you must have violated some child labor laws working here at the age of five or something because you certainly don't look old enough for that math to work out. But I just want to thank you for your tremendous and long-time service and dedication to the people of our city. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to give the floor to Mr. Cooley and Mr. Robinson to share any reflections that you have.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I, I think the mayor summed up a lot of, uh, what Jack's is about and what his character is like. Uh, I've been very fortunate over the last, uh, five and a half years to have Jack working alongside of me in, in DPW. Uh, I would, I would never say Jack worked for me. Uh, he was the brains behind everything. Um, he's definitely a man of character. Uh, I've been very blessed to be not only his coworker, but he's, uh, a great, great friend to not only me, but my family as well. Uh, he's going to be dearly missed. Um, I think of Jack like my brother. Um, and I, I, I will keep him on my speed dial because I will need him. Um, but I, I, I agree. I, I've never heard anybody speak a bad word about Jack, and that comes both ways. I've never heard Jack speak a bad word about anybody else. Uh, kept a great demeanor, soft-spoken, uh, full of knowledge. Um, we could ride a street, any street in Pontiac, and, uh, he could tell me what day it was paved, uh, what issues they had on that street, um, what issues that are going to be coming forward on that street, and to have that wealth of knowledge has just been a huge benefit and a huge blessing to me. Thank you for everything, Jack.
Jack, I'd just like to say to my brother in Christ, I love you. And this guy right here, which is like my older brother, when my brother passed and, uh, pulled up in the parking lot and I got the news, Jack just came and gave me a hug and we started praying, and it's, we just got a connection. I love him with all my heart, and he's taught me a lot, and, um, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to call you. I'm going to miss you. Stay strong. I love you.
Thank you. Would any of Jack's family like to take the floor and roast Jack? I, um, would like to, um, at this point, we'll go forward with the resolution, vote on the resolution, and then we'll give Jack the opportunity. He doesn't have to, but he can have the floor as well for, um, the last word and the microphone drop, um, from Jack in his own words if he'd like to. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution celebrating Jack Cady's lengthy service to the city of Pontiac?
So moved.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. Whereas Mr. Jack Cady began his career working for the city of Pontiac, Michigan on September twenty-second, nineteen sixty-nine, and following his retirement from direct city employment, worked for NOAC and Frost where he was engaged to handle projects for the city of Pontiac, including direct support within Pontiac City Hall. And whereas Mr. Cady has invested countless hours in the pursuit of strengthening the city of Pontiac through so many public works and engineering projects spanning fifty-plus years, and whereas during his service to the city of Pontiac, many challenging issues and difficult decisions arose, and his positive impact has been felt throughout every neighborhood and every thoroughfare in Pontiac. And whereas Mr. Cady's employment with NOAC and Frost is concluding after many years, and his tenure serving Pontiac is coming to an end, now therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby celebrates the decades of selfless public service of Mr. Jack Cady. And further resolved, the city council expresses our gratitude to the many years of impactful service of Mr. Cady, and acknowledges how his hard work has resulted in thousands of Pontiac citizens having a safer life. And further resolved, the city council wishes Mr. Cady and his family the very best as they mark the conclusion of his time working for the city of Pontiac. Signed by all seven members of the city council, the mayor of Pontiac, Tim Grimal, in the great city of Pontiac, Michigan, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is the motion before us. Is there any discussion on the motion? Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Just want to say thank you, uh, thank you. Uh, you answered all my calls, uh, since I've been on council and before then when I was actually trying to do things in the community as well. You was always there for me. Times I didn't know what to do, you took me to the site and said, "This is what we can do, and we can, you can get it, get it right together." So I sincerely thank you for over fifty-plus. Um, I was only born three years after you started working here, so that is, that is amazing. You know, you just don't hear about people staying at jobs consistently for over fifty years. So I continue to thank you for your service, sir.
Further discussion? I want to celebrate and herald Jack, your love for the city of Pontiac and the people of Pontiac, and I think anyone that's worked or interacted with you on different projects, that has shined through time and again. And as somebody who is very passionate about our community's history, I'm grateful that you, through your work with City Hall, was passionate for that as well, that you fought for that, you advocated to make sure that, uh, the special parts of our community's past can be preserved, saved, celebrated, and, um, I truly hope the community recognizes, I mean, to what Mr. Cooley and Mr. Robinson said in terms of the, the vast wealth of knowledge, that basically every square inch of our city, through some project or another, Jack has impacted. And that means a lot for the safety and well-being of residents. Residents might not ever know who helped make sure that some, a project was successfully done, or that the engineering was properly implemented, but it could have very devastating consequences when it didn't. And for fifty-three years, you helped hold the line and make sure quality was there, and residents, whether they are even living here anymore, even still with us, you've made their life better, and that's a very big deal, and I thank you for that on, on their behalf, those present and those former. Any further discussion? Roll call on adoption of this resolution honoring Mr. Jack Cady and his admirable service to the city of Pontiac, Michigan.
Thank you. I'd like to thank and recognize Mayor Waterman and Mayor Grimal and the deputy mayor and all the council for fortunate to be here tonight, so I can thank you all and you can hear this. But for the residents who aren't here, the residents who have passed on, I'm grateful to have been a part of the city of Pontiac for so many years. My kids were small, the city of Pontiac housed my family and kept food on the table and sent them to college. So I'm grateful, and I owe the city of Pontiac all that I could, all that I could give them. And I hope in some small way I have achieved a portion of the council's own mission statement that I have had a small part among many who have desired to make the city a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you also very much.
Thank you. And Jack, before you sit down, would you like to introduce the family members that are here with you, if you want to take the podium so it can be recorded for posterity?
First, I have to thank my wife, who got the lunch ready every day for 53 years. And she made sure it was ready. And my granddaughter Lydia, who's the youngest of six. Standing against the wall is my son, Jack Jr., and his wife, Petra. And against the back wall is my daughter-in-law, Kimberly, my son, Jason, and my daughter, Jennifer.
Thank you to the entire family. To your beautiful bride and all family, thank you for sharing, Jack, with the citizens of Pontiac. It's a heavy task, and it's a, there's a lot that comes with that. And we're really, really grateful because we know that sometimes the stresses and burdens of these really complex and weighty, thorny matters, they sometimes go home with you as you're working them through and analyzing the best practices to proceed with. Thank you on behalf of the citizens of Pontiac, and God bless you.
Yes. Thank you.
Very good. We are now at our second special presentation, emergency housing needs and currently available local resources. We're grateful to have Kimber Bishop Yankee, who's the chair of Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness, and Professor Jennifer Lucarelli of Oakland University. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, mayor, deputy mayor, and city council residents of Pontiac and supporters for just being here and giving us your time this evening. We are here in response to the resolution that was passed by city council last week calling for better coordination and access to resources around mental health and other supports throughout the Pontiac community in response to the recent and tragic loss of a mother and her children. And so we are going to share with you some information about the Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness, and also some ideas for next steps on what things that we can do in the immediate future to help improve access to these resources. So I'm going to let Kimber go ahead and start, and then I will do my professorial thing at the end.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name's Kimber Bishop Yankee. I'm the chair of the Oakland County Task Force on Poverty and Homelessness. I became the chair by accident. About five years ago, I tried to help a 22-year-old girl who was sleeping in her car during the polar vortex. Somebody asked me if I could help her, and I thought it would not be that challenging. And I called all the numbers and all the resources that were supposed to help. And we found that we didn't get calls back, or we got passed from one organization to another organization. And so I found the experience very upsetting for the way she was treated and the fact that she did not get the help that she needed. So I went to some elected officials, and they said, bring together the nonprofits, we'll bring you some elected officials, and the task force was born. The mission of the task force is to create awareness about the barriers that people that are homeless and in poverty face. It is to bring legislation to elected officials in hopes that they will pass and eliminate some of these barriers and provide funding. And the third piece is to get everyday citizens like myself involved in addressing this issue. This is our community, Oakland County, and we are lacking services in our community. Homelessness is a nationwide problem, and we have it everywhere you can look. So I'm here to say the house is on fire, and I would like people to respond as if the house is on fire. When somebody is in crisis and they call a number, there needs to be someone to answer the number, to put them in touch with the right help, and to make sure they get that help. A year ago at this time, I received an email that was forwarded to me by another nonprofit that there was a gentleman standing on the corner of one of the streets in Pontiac. He had just been evicted, he had an oxygen tank, and he was walking with a cane. He had nowhere to go. I did not realize the email went out to everybody, but I was the only person that responded. We spent over one year trying to get this man help and into housing. I have a volunteer who paid for his housing up until about a week ago. We had a volunteer that took, went to many apartments to drop off applications. We did everything that the system had available. And months into the process, we found out that he had a felony from 20 years ago, and the majority of housing was not going to accept him anyway. And we had spent all that time, all those application fees, trying to work a system that is full of misinformation and full of gaps. I got to know Jennifer, Professor Jennifer Lucarelli, when COVID started. I joined her efforts with my COVID response. If you're not aware of what my COVID response is, Jennifer and Cam Underdown, Chris Powers, created this website that connected volunteers to people in need. And we were able to serve thousands of people, and they did it on their own initiative, everyday citizens on their own initiative, and we were able to meet people in crisis. So we want to bring something similar, a coordinated effort, working together, bringing elected leaders, everyday citizens, nonprofits, churches, all working together on one common goal, and that is to serve our families who are in crisis with dignity and the real help they need. So thank you. You all are really the first group that is really listening. I've gone to about every elected politician I can think of, and I really appreciate that you're open to these conversations. I'm going to let Jennifer take over.
And Kimber is doing this as a concerned citizen. This is not her job. She does not get paid to chair this task force. She is a small business owner who just can't sleep at night because of this, as many of us do. And so in four and a half minutes, I'm going to try to summarize the complexity of this issue and provide a couple of evidence-based solutions that we could try out in the city of Pontiac right now. And so as Kimber said, our social service safety nets are failing, and so we've got this informal network of people that is starting to come together and really help to fill those gaps in that net. We know that the root causes of poverty and homelessness and access to mental health services is complex, and due to a lot of root causes that include things that are really hard to change socially. So we don't have a living minimum wage for individuals. Inflation has caused the cost of everything to increase dramatically. We don't have transportation. We've got people who are real humans facing real issues in their complex lives. People experienced trauma and adverse childhood experiences, discrimination, domestic violence, and substance abuse. That just makes it harder to navigate that incredibly complex system that we can't even navigate under good circumstances. So the three strategies I want the city council to consider are putting resources towards a community resource exchange technology that creates a literal one-stop-shop where people can have their needs met. They create their profile and then are presented with all of the resources that they need, and then we can see if they are followed up with.
Could you turn your microphone on again? I'm sorry. I asked you accidentally.
I see how it is, Mike. The second thing that I want to talk about is this idea of having co-responders that go out to emergency calls right alongside all of our emergency services. So we're proposing two additional co-responders be added to the Oakland County Sheriff's Office Pontiac unit through Oakland Community Health Network. We also want you to consider looking at flexible assistance programs and piloting that in the Pontiac community. We know that a lot of the federal programs have a lot of very specific requirements and can only be used for very specific costs, but living in poverty is incredibly expensive. And so these flexible assist programs really provide an allocation of money on a monthly basis for a longer period of time, maybe 12 months instead of one month, so that people can kind of get their feet under them and access these programs. And so I'll talk a little bit about this community resource exchange. Think of it again as like an electronic profile where you create your household and identify your needs. Maybe you have kids that need educational support or seniors that need access to meals. And then community organizations all put their resources into this online database, and you can reach out directly to them. So there's no going around and filling out 12 different applications for each of these programs and having to show your paperwork this many times. It automatically connects you with the service providers in your community that can get you the help that you need. It also will give us a better understanding of the data. So we've got so many people calling all of these different agencies that we don't know how many people are actually in need at any given point in time. So having an individual by name profile helps us to understand what the total need is and then advocate for the resources that we need to solve those problems in our community. And then we also can push real-time communication to the citizens instead of making them wait a week, three weeks, two months to get a call back from these agencies. We can push communications to them that say, we will be with you in 24 hours, or this program is closed because they're sitting around waiting, not knowing if there's any resources available to them. We're just sending them in circles, which really creates this sense of hopelessness. The co-responder model in brief is really where you get social support workers, usually social workers that go along with responders. And in addition to looking at the immediate crisis, maybe it's a domestic violence situation or some other thing going on, that social worker takes a look at the individual and the family and really assesses what their true root cause needs are, and then connects them with appropriate services in the community. And they make sure that that individual or that family is followed up with at an appropriate time. The Flex Assistance Program pilot, like I mentioned, is just undesignedated funding that you provide directly to the family, and they can use it to meet their immediate needs in that real time based on what they are. And so I think what we can do now is dedicating $50,000 in seed funding to that community resource exchange, adding those two additional co-responders to the Pontiac Oakland County Sheriff's Office team, and then securing $250,000 for this Flex Assistance Program pilot. That was real close to 10 minutes. I tried.
You literally did it within a second. That was very cool.
Thank you.
And thank you for very quickly heeding the opportunity to present to the city council. It wasn't as though you had many weeks. You pivoted very effectively. Now is the time for council questions and feedback? Looks like there's a few, so I'll start going down the row. Councilman Brett Nicholson.
So the seed money, I thank you first of all for coming with concrete, actionable items. I think, you know, that's where we all sort of look at each other, even people that sit up here that work in mental health are always, you know, sort of puzzled because there's 1,000 questions, and everybody has a solution, but some of them aren't as concrete or obvious, and these are certainly that. The seed money would be for an organic system, to actually build a system, a software?
Yes. And so we're basing this on the work that we had done with My COVID Response, where within days of the COVID virus being located in Michigan, we had set up a network of community organizations that all brought their unique resources together to get emergency food to people. So Lighthouse has actually adopted that system as their permanent food delivery. They created a better technology solution iteration, like a 2.0 version of My COVID Response. And from the discussions that we have at the state and national level, there's not really an existing tool that has shown that it works. And so leaders are starting to understand the importance of locally developed solutions. And so we know that we can do it with this group of stakeholders and the technology company that was born out of My COVID Response.
Thank you. Pontiac is unique in our positioning as sort of the epicenter of human services within the county and really even our region. And that has always been something that is challenging for me to wrap my arms around, where a lot of times we, as a city, are, people come to us for the resource, not realizing that citizens from all over the county and the region are seeking those resources and aren't necessarily Pontiac residents. And we also have a much larger land area for our tax base. So it is somewhat difficult to be able to add the same level of resource. So I do hope that some of our partners and neighboring communities do also see this need as being important. My question, what I've seen working in human services during, you know, my Monday through Friday, is that there's a lot of money that goes out to a lot of different agencies that call Pontiac home. Some of them, I've never heard of them. I try to call them, they don't, their phone doesn't work, but you see these grants, you know, being received by addresses that have defunct buildings. Will the task force be open to, as I have personally, advocating for the right agencies? You mentioned one who does tremendous work in Lighthouse, to receive these funds that might also be partnering on task force activities rather than some of the agencies or organizations that are set up that don't do the work?
I would like to answer that. The whole reason I'm doing this is to make sure that we bring the right partners and they're committed to helping people. So that's our 100% goal, is you have to be collaborative, follow through, and we want to see how you're helping that person. We don't want to know you answered a call, we want to see what the help is.
Thank you. Thanks. Good to see you, Kimber.
Councilman Goodman.
I mean, I'm just happy to see you here, obviously seeing Jen again. It's really nice to see you for the first time in a few months. I mean, obviously just thank you for bringing this to the city, bringing actionable things that we can do. Because I don't think that we oftentimes like fully like discuss like homelessness in the way that we should. Because I, we oftentimes talk about it as some far-off thing that we're not close to or that we're not really a part of, but recognizing that a single paycheck, a single life experience, not being able to get to work for one day, having someone get sick, puts you right there. Not only that, like the stages of homelessness, which I know all of us are very familiar with. There is so much that has to be done, not just for the individuals who are actively homeless, who are actively needing the help, but obviously the preventative measures to make sure that people don't end up homeless, because it costs more to get someone out of homelessness than to prevent them from going into it in the very first place. See, it'd have been nice to just give you more time, but like to look at this further, like to have a discussion and talk about, you know, what it means to create more permanent solutions to housing, not just temporary ones that are, like you said, the emergency shelters, the transitional housing stability, but the things that go beyond that, to create sustainable ways for people to be able to not end up homeless. So I really just do want to say thank you so much for bringing this, and I would love to obviously talk to you, both you and Kimber, a lot more about this because housing is one of my main issues. Like growing up in Section 8, like having that life experience, it's extremely important thing to me. So I, just again, want to say thank you for bringing this and taking the time out of your day, and yeah, I look forward to working more with you.
Thank you. Are we allowed to respond to?
Yes, yes.
I would just like to say, is one of the issues is that HUD, the federal level, has a definition for homelessness, which is you have to be living in a car, on the street, in a shelter, or a hotel paid for by a shelter. So what happens is the people that are sleeping on couches, couch surfing, or maybe they pay for a hotel for a night, and then they're in their car the next night, and then they pay for a hotel for a night, those people cannot get services because they are not considered literally homeless. So we are missing a whole group of thousands of people. I have, I do have a nonprofit also, so I'm actually doing I have, I do have a nonprofit also, so I'm actually doing this work, again, by accident. I have 13 families in hotel rooms right now. One of them is a mother with eight children who was just evicted. A Pontiac principal called me, and if we had known 10 days earlier, we could have paid the $1,500 she owed instead of her whole entire family being evicted. We have a Pontiac family in the hotel who's been living there for two years. They pay $1,200 in hotel bills, although I paid their bill today, a month, $1,200 a month, and they're paying $750 for two storage units. So, the people that are homeless are paying for Ubers, fast food, hotels, and storage units, and they're never going to dig themselves out until they get the correct help.
Yeah. The only thing I was going to add to that is we're only seeing the tip of the iceberg right now. The COVID pandemic has really destroyed many families financially, and the eviction moratorium just ended in October. And so, in the three months since that ended, we have seen 1,000 families per month in the courts in Oakland County for eviction. So, we are at the forefront of what is about to be a really huge crisis.
Councilwoman James.
I also appreciate you coming and sharing these concrete suggestions. On the community resource exchange, one thing that you said that I really like is that we do need to get common people involved. We need to get volunteers in the community, our churches, individuals involved in this problem because it's going to take, it's just not going to be a nonprofits coordinating and coming together. But the, what you said about the exchange that you want to be able to set up profiles...
Councilwoman James has the floor. If those could cease their conversations, Councilwoman James has the floor.
If it's going to be based on that, you know, that the family has to go in and set up a profile, you know, it seems to me that we really need to engage our churches, individual people, that anyone should be able to assist a family because everyone's not savvy with computers and everything, that people that need the help may not just be savvy, but just may not know, you know, not be mentally prepared to do that. So, it might take a third party to say, "Hey, you need to fill out a profile here and you can get some help here." So, I agree that you're going to have to get, or we are going to have to really engage our residents and everyone involved to help with this problem with homelessness and poverty in our city. But I think the things that you've come up with, certainly My COVID Response, I was a part of that, and it can help. It's not going to solve all of the problems, but it can help, and we have got to start somewhere. But I agree that we absolutely have to get individuals, churches, everyone who is concerned about it. We've all got to get involved in what it's going to take to solve this problem.
So, on Monday, we had a meeting called Filling the Gap, and we were trying to find organizations that are helping people that are not receiving the federal, state, and county dollars. One such organization, St. Vincent de Paul, joined the meeting, and so, we're going to be talking to them because they have touch points all throughout Oakland County. So, we need, I would like to see a spider web where we sort of have, you know, the one-stop shop, but then we have people all through the county that can help somebody get into that app and get them services.
Yes.
Yeah. And I just want you to know that we understand that people do have, struggle with technology or they don't have a printer. So, I've had over 1,300 volunteers work with me, and we actually print out the applications, drop them off, fill them out with the person. So, we understand people need that human touch, that human heart, to help them navigate the system because I'm telling you, we can't even figure out the system.
Councilman Parker, you're next, but your microphone might be giving you issues if you want to borrow Councilwoman James.
I'm good.
Okay.
I think I'm good. I hope I'm good. It says it's on.
It sounds good, just the light's not on on the microphone.
Well, let me start over. Thank you for coming. Certainly, we appreciate you coming. For those, I was in on a meeting yesterday, and it certainly was very informative. And I know that what we talked about was having some community involvement, making sure that we speak truth to power, and getting the community to collaborate in the effort to resolve the issues that are there. So, I'm looking forward to the continued emphasis on homelessness that you guys are going to do, and certainly want to be as familiar in helping to move this process forward. Somebody mentioned, I think, one of these yesterday, keep y'all, some of you may have some understanding and share with us just a little bit. They talked about a prototype, DC Flex. Can you share? Because we can probably, I looked at that, and I'm hoping somebody could, you could speak to that a little bit more, if you can, something similar to that.
Yeah. That was the third suggestion that I had, was the Flexible Assistance Program. The model that Commissioner Charlie Cavell had looked at is called DC Flex. And so, it provides households stipends of, I think, $8,000 total over, I think, a 12-month period, and they can use that financial assistance for whatever utilities or other kind of living costs, you know, food, transportation that they have. And so, we can share more information about that pilot program with you.
Thank you. Councilwoman James.
Can you also share if a resident is listening and they want to get involved in this? Can you share contact information? Me for one, because I definitely want to get involved with it as a private citizen. Can you share the phone numbers and the names of how people can go about getting involved?
Is this also being recorded, the screen?
You'll want to verbally amplify it.
Okay. So, if people would like to get involved, they can email me at Kimber, K-I-M-B-E-R, Kids Empowered, K-I-D-S, empowered, which is E-M, the word power, P-O-W-E-R-E-D.com. And my cellphone is 248-840-9858.
One more time.
Everybody's welcome to join our task force. We meet monthly by Zoom, and anybody's welcome and everybody's welcome.
And your phone number again, Kimber? It's Kimber@KidsEmpowered.com for email. My question, it's focusing on those co-responders. So, my understanding, and Mayor, if you and Deputy Mayor have a better understanding, let's draw this out further, that there is one co-responder assigned to the city of Pontiac, and they've been there maybe nine, 10 months, two, to your understanding? And so, I've heard some data from Oakland County Commissioners that one co-responder gets about an average of 466 sort of service visits that they're doing, and about 60 of those or 90 of those are sort of like that intervention right there when the arrest is happening. They're there to help sort of de-escalate, especially with mental health situation. But that the rest of them, they're sort of following up after that, after this incident or the interaction with the law enforcement. In our instance, the sheriff's deputy or a team of deputies, and they're following up to make sure food needs are being met, that they're, all those wraparound services, that they're essentially a social worker that's working during and after police incidents to help directly serve families that are interfacing with the law enforcement agency. And I just wanted to, you know, Mayor, if there was anything further that could help understand for the city council, the viability for that, if there's been any deliberation so far about how we can try and elevate the number and the reach for the Pontiac community? Is that caseload adequate for the one or two co-responders, or are we in need of more? They're advocating for two more specifically correct, dedicated to the Pontiac community. That's the vision?
Yes. And if I have the correct information, I believe there is one co-responder that is allocated to the cities of Auburn Hills, Birmingham, and Bloomfield Hills that has been part of a federal-funded pilot test of this. I don't believe there are co-responders with Oakland County Sheriff's Office for the city of Pontiac at this time, but please correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I believe there's at least one co-responder with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office that operates in the city of Pontiac. There's, I think, been some discussion about the effectiveness of that role in terms of de-escalating situations based on at least one anecdotal experience that occurred. I've always heard the Sheriff's Office say that they have two co-responders. What I don't know is whether they're both allocated to the city of Pontiac. So, I'll certainly dig into that and confirm that. I had the impression that we had two with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office assigned specifically to the Pontiac, but that may or may not be the case. I think what we're broadly talking about here, especially not so much when it comes to the de-escalation and being deployed with law enforcement, but certainly when it comes to the follow-up visits with families, which arguably is the even more important part here. I think that dovetails well with one of the recommendations that the Anti-Violence Commission has discussed and that we're working on, which is establishing a ceasefire-type program, which is a program that really has three legs to the stool, one leg being law enforcement itself, another leg being well-respected community leaders, and the third leg being social service providers. And certainly, I think some of this will dovetail with a conversation, a more in-depth conversation, about establishing a ceasefire-like program here to try to have early interventions for a variety of reasons, both in terms of just connecting people with needed services, but also to try to prevent violence before it occurs in the community, which is really the focus of ceasefire. But I think there are a lot of opportunities here to try to make sure that we're having more early interventions to head off crises before they even occur.
Councilman Nicholson.
I know, I've been actually on a visit, it was a pre-eviction notice posting with a sheriff's officer as well as one of those responding social workers. Essentially, their message to the family was, "There are no resources. We have no resources. This is how you stay safe tonight. And here's my card. You can call me. And here's a place you can get a cellphone if you can't, if you don't have one yourself." So, I don't know how effective it really was in that situation. They were perfectly nice. I certainly think it, it was nice to have someone who was there to be empathetic, but as far as the resources, it's hard to be that social worker, be the one who's there that wants to do all the work, who has all of the, you know, skills and education to do it. But when the resource doesn't exist, you know, that's where, you know, I think we run into that third prong. It really, to me, does seem like a three-legged stool.
Further discussion. So, the final three takeaways or recommendations that this special presentation has offered us this evening, one is that exchange, that shared exchange. The second is the implication, thank you, the seed resources of $50,000 to help launch that. The two additional co-responders, housed at Oakland County Sheriff's Office from OCHN, the Community Mental Health Agency that Oakland County utilizes. And then finally, Flex Assistance Program Pilot with a $250,000 suggested price tag from resources that Pontiac can facilitate. So, these are important conversations, especially as we assess the program build-outs for the American Rescue Plan funding. And of course, the people of Pontiac have voted for the Headley rollback in November that allows us greater resources in terms of operational resources starting in the next fiscal year. So, those are two possible paths, but we want to leverage Oakland County's American Rescue Plan funding and other state, federal agencies that this could be really well-served from. So, I'm grateful again, as to echo what my colleagues have said about specific deliverable follow-ups that we can make. That concludes this special presentation. Thank you very much for your time and attention to the Pontiac community. We are now at recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials in our community that would like to be given the floor tonight? Seeing none, we are at Agenda Address, Pro Tem Carrington. Are there any requests for addressing items on the agenda?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. At this time, Agenda Address gives you an opportunity to speak your concerns about agenda items on a docket tonight. First, Mr. Norman Elam. What issue? Okay.
You want to hit the microphone? To the right. Got it.
Okay. To the mayor and to council president and pro tem, to our council person who is not in tonight, Melanie Rutherford. My concern is with the ordinance four that I believe that will be voted on this evening. Not for sure, but the second reading of the ordinance. I spent the whole weekend with, dealing with this ordinance and things that are, you know, being presented and things like that, and I have a concern in that the Woodward area is coming back before the council, and it's be back in, I believe, 15 days or so, not for sure, and y'all can address this later. My concern is that Melanie Rutherford has recused herself during this whole operation. I was at the special meeting for the Planning Commission, and Tim Shepherd recused himself as being maybe a conflict. I don't quite understand how that council person, Nicholson, can be involved in this when he will directly profit from this ordinance and him being involved in this marijuana situation downtown. Now, I could be wrong, and I stand to be corrected, okay? But he has a business, and whatever happens will impact his business. Now, he wants me not to have a business.
That does conclude your time.
We'll be back.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Christine Elam. You pass? Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Carlton Jones.
Good evening. I'm going to speak to the same ordinance, number four, on agenda. I want to say hopefully that everybody got a chance to look at the Planning Commission meeting that we just had. First and foremost, I want to give a lot of respect to the planner. I think he did an excellent job in explaining a whole lot of unknowns. I also want and hope that the representatives for the council, President McGinnis, got a chance to come back and share some of the notes if the council didn't get a chance to. Here it is. Public information, was a lot of good public information came out about this issue. One of the things I will say, we all need to be very conscious that there was a lot of community benefits for the whole city that was a part of this whole marijuana issue. If anybody ever wondered why I come out and speak about this, we had a lot of people who said it's important that they want to help the city with community benefits if it goes forward. We voted for it. It should go forward with those people who came, business people who came with honest intentions, and that we should do nothing to try to eliminate those folks with having a good, fair chance to come and produce for Pontiac and the community benefits. Now, I know the council is new, but this goes back. I would hope you would go... I would hope you would go and do some checking about the community benefits that come with this whole marijuana issue. I have no shame, the workforce development component was a part of the community benefits for some of the folks on that Woodward quarter. And I would hopefully that that ordinance is considering the community benefits for the city, not just for no one person. These are community benefits for the city of Pontiac. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
But first I want to say, Jack Cady, I remember him such a gentleman, so much grace, 53 years of service to the city, and I always remember how ever-thorny issue I had, we always see each other in the hallway or something, and he would shake my hand and said, "Mayor, I'm always praying for you every night." So I do appreciate that, and that's my memory of Jack Cady, great man. But number four, as you approach the vote on bringing adult-use marijuana to the city of Pontiac, I'm glad that you have incorporated some of the things we've advocated for. One of them I was very adamant about was keeping it out of our neighborhoods, and you did do that in your way. The other thing that it looks like that you're trying to bring in is something else we've advocated for, and that was a quantitative, measurable, objective way of the scoring process for community benefits. And I see from the packet that, that an amendment that comes today is that you're intending to address that. That's very important because of the process that's involved in keeping us out of lawsuits and things, and also to getting the benefits, the way that they benefit most people in the city. But the last few seconds that I have, I was touched by the presentation from the Homeless Task Force, and it brings to mind that what can we do as a city? That's what Oakland County is doing and volunteers, but what can we do as a city too? There are some things we can do. My good friend, Karen Bass, who I went to Cuba with about five years ago, was elected mayor of Los Angeles, and the first thing she did, she's a woman of action, the first thing she did the first day was declare a state of emergency in Los Angeles against homelessness. Now, that's action, and that's the way you approach that. And it brought to mind, as they're talking about, some of these families just need a little boost. And I'm going to go back to the ARP money, ARP money, we fought to have it be a COVID benefit, and it's about $609, at $838 million, about $609 for every man, woman, child in Pontiac. Think of what, if we could give that to some of those homeless families, what that could do, maybe change their lives and give them a little boost. All right.
Thank you. Mr. Justin Jurgens.
Good evening, guys. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. I appreciate everybody's effort here. I was fortunate enough to talk to Mike McGinnis earlier last week, a little bit of insight. I know this is a tough job, this has been a long process. I'm here to speak about number four, by the way. And just like Mr. Elam, I'm a property owner that has a contract with a top-five non-overlay candidate, so, you know, this three-year, four-year process, I think we're in the fourth year, has been tough, and I think you're about to vote on an ordinance that is clearly unfair. I've made my rounds and talked to everybody that'll talk to me, anybody that is in the non-overlay and Caesar Chavez and downtown alike, so. The tough part for me to understand is nobody has answered the question yet, or, or made any sort of statement as to why we're about to vote adult use out of the non-overlay. I understand that we're considering still a Woodward overlay, but that potentially creates more litigation. It's just a different style of litigation. These non-overlay guys are not going away, right? I think the biggest thing that Mike said to me last week, and the, the most appreciation I have is he says, "Hey, I want something fair. I want something that's amicable for both sides." And I agree with that, but at this point, we're not. That non-overlay is no different than Caesar Chavez and Walton as far as traffic count, commerce. It's, it's identical, but we're okay with adult use there, and we're not okay with adult use in the non-overlay. It's, it's, I'm asking you guys to look at this and go the path of least resistance that makes sense and is fair, the way it was set up to begin with. Give these guys a fair shot for their adult use. Medical is not viable. What's the difference between selling medical marijuana out the front door or adult use? It's the same thing, those people are still going to go there. Medical is just going to be a tough go for those companies. And again, I appreciate everybody's effort here. I know you got stuck with this.
This is your time.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jean Zalinski.
After following somebody over six feet. Good evening. John Zalinski with Common Citizen. Thank you again. Here we are. I'm here on item number four. I appreciate all the comments from the members of the audience today, as well as council's efforts in truly picking up what was bequeathed to them in, in their elected, elected role here. I have the same questions that Mr. Jurgens has. It is a bit perplexing as to why there are operators in one overlay that seemingly have a, a leg up or an unfair advantage where the non-overlay district applicants have, have really been cut off at the knees. So on, on that note, and Justin also brought up another good point with regards to litigation. He's right, these, these guys are not going to go away, and that's litigation that's at the taxpayers' dime, and that's what you're elected up here to do, is to manage the dollars of the taxpayers. So in light of that, I'd like to read a quote directly from state law, and that's MCL 333. dot 27956. This comes from the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act that was adopted by voters in 2018, and it reads, "A municipality may not adopt an ordinance that restricts the transportation of marijuana through a municipality or prohibits a marijuana retailer from operating within a single facility or from operating at a location shared with a marijuana facility operating pursuant to the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act." That is exactly what excluding the non-overlay applicants does, is it prevents them from operating co-location with adult use and medical at their location. I wanted to bring this to your attention because this is...
That does conclude your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark, what item? Mr. Chuck Johnson, what item?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Chuck Johnson here. While I certainly am mindful, this marijuana issue has become a, a whole ball of wax or, or, it's unnecessary things that are happening. And I agree with Justin, and I agree with Norman. Those individuals should have the opportunity to get their business up and running on the south end of town. And I want to applaud the mayor for adding the two people to the Planning Commission, but those two individuals that are on the Planning Commission, I don't think that they know as much about this whole issue as, as they need to know in order to help to move something forward. Then we had another individual that couldn't, had to recuse himself. Now our planning commissioners are down to where they can't do a real, real good job, and I don't know why we keep dumping it over to the planning commissioners when we should handle it right here and be done with it. Why, why are we keep passing the buck here? And that's what we're actually doing, is buck-passing. Now, I'm not a part of this marijuana issue, I don't care which way it goes, but I am concerned about people like Mr. Elam, Justin over here, and any other individual on the, on the south end of town that deserves a right to be a part of this marijuana program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller, what item?
I do want to answer the question while the next speaker is coming up. The state of Michigan requires if there's a zoning text amendment or zoning map amendment, it does require a public hearing with a 15-day notice at the Planning Commission level, and it requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the, to the city council. So it's a, the state of Michigan puts that additional threshold or more bureaucracy on it.
Okay, thank you. You know, actually, I wasn't going to speak, okay, ready for me? But I want to speak in regard to the shelter. You know, ever since this young lady passed away, this froze to death, sometimes I wake up, I, I have tears, I, it hurts me, because that, that was like, that could have been in our kids. And I refuse to politicize it, that's why I never say anything about it, but I have to say something. You know, the elephant in the room is, nobody is not talking about why the officer was discharged. Maybe that's the reason that child is dead, because he didn't do his job, and then she was out there freezing to death. I see in my, in my notification where he was, where he quit, he wasn't fired. He obviously has some input on that child's death. Maybe if he had have followed her and did his job, she'd be alive today, you know? And I'm going to say this, when I was growing up, the church was everything. We didn't, government is going to let you down. We got to take care of ourselves in this city. What's the name of this group on my phone? And CC Hiko runs it. She go out in the street, she take care of people, she buy, she ask for food, she ask for clothing, she just come on in and ask us. That's what you call in-house, working on the ground, and she don't even have herself, and she gives. She know of people living under the bridges, she know where all the homeless is at. She know where it's at. And guess what? Why don't we? There's a lot of people that's being neglected out there because, and I'm just going to put it out there, the churches failed that young lady, the elected leaders failed that young lady, because she didn't pay attention. And guess what? I want some of you council members tonight before my time, and mention where the Mormon shelter is at, because somebody out there tonight may die from the cold. We got to get out of here, Pontiac, and do this ourselves, because nobody going to care but us, but us.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Josper, what item?
So I want to thank the mayor and the council for moving forward on this and taking the proper procedures through the Planning Division. I was at the meeting, they've discussed a 20, 20-day delay before, because they need to give 15-day notification, which wasn't done on the Woodward overlay. So I don't think you'll be voting on that today, but if you are, you need to consider a couple of different things. I think this has been brought up. You need to be fair to every licensee. Anybody who's going to receive a license in any overlay or non-overlay area needs to have the same rules applied to both sides. Let the businesses fight it out, who's going to be profitable, who's not, not the undertow in, in the city of Pontiac. There's a huge undertow here that keeps trying to push advantages to certain individuals to give themselves benefits against the others. But it's about the city, it's about the citizens of Pontiac, not just the residents. Residents are anybody that's moved here from anywhere else in the world, and we have to look at that. But more importantly, these marijuana licenses could be a part of providing the necessary income for homeless. You need a digital application to have accountability, to do that so that you have access. Right now, if you go to any one of these churches or facilities or federal units, they're all out of cash capital, and they don't want to talk to anybody, and they're humiliated to talk to anyone else. Meanwhile, those people, if you've ever been homeless, which I happen to have had the experience of sleeping in a car, it's not a nice thing. I got the chance to live in Detroit in a boys' home for two weeks where, well, 1978, you can imagine how I was treated. That being said, it doesn't really matter. People need to be respected, and that's, that's what's happening here. If you're homeless or if you doesn't have things, people disrespect you, they make you bleed out your entire life of how homeless and how horrible you are, it doesn't benefit you. We need to make some differences in how we approach that process. But we have a unique scenario happening with the marijuana licenses. If we make it fair for everybody, and we charge for electricity, water purification, data systems, accountability, and we attach that to the homeless, and we set up medical and a workforce development facility, now we're helping everybody in the city of Pontiac, whether you believe in the marijuana application or don't. That's where we have to go. This should be attached to the partnership that's underneath closed-door sessions that was entered into before you guys became council members. It's something that's legally binding to the city, and the people aren't being interpreted. They don't know what's going on, what's happening behind those closed doors. That's the undertow in the city. So it has to do something, you have to do something different. Keep doing the same old thing, the same old thing goes over and over, and it's a crazy person, because we never get anything accomplished. So those things have to come together, and you need to take that consideration. You got an extra 20 days. Let's all try to discuss with the community leaders, sit down, have some extra meeting, lunches, breakfast, whatever, before you finalize the ordinance. Go over with the attorneys and put out something that's really going to be beneficial for the city as a whole. And I mean that for the citizens of Pontiac, not just the people with the money. Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. President McGinnis, that concludes our Agenda Address.
All right, we are at item number four, the, a reading of the adoption of the city of Pontiac Adult Use Marijuana Business Ordinance. It was postponed from last week's city council meeting. So this has been reviewed and revised and honed and tweaked and tightened over the last two months approximately, and what we have, what we received ahead of last week were 12 additional proposed amendments. So I want to hear from council, but my sense is that we should spend some time handling those 12 proposed amendments, since we've had over a week to review them, and it may be the council's wish to see that we postpone it further as the zoning ordinance is further reviewed and discussed. But I want to give the, the majority of the council gets to call those shots, I just want, Councilwoman James. Microphone.
Thank you. Mr. President, I want to make a motion to, that we reconsider bringing the non-overlay district back into the, as-is, back into the ordinance. I would like to make a, a proposal or make a, a motion that we, we bring that back into as-is, back into the ordinance, because I do believe that it's our responsibility. We, as a council, took on the responsibility of writing a, an ordinance for recreational marijuana, and I do believe that we have the responsibility to carry out the full, the full, all parts of it, you know? It's, it's our responsibility. So I would like to propose that.
I hear that. It wouldn't be a motion that's in order, though, because the, the overlay districts or any districts are in the zoning ordinance, which comes next, which isn't before us right now. We can include it as part of the deliberations, and when we, maybe a month and a half ago had the conversation, it was really about the number of retailers, that we impacted the number of retailers with the intention of focusing on the, the expectation of certain districts.
Well, what we did was, we took the original overlay out of the, the original ordinance.
We did that by voting on number of retailers. This particular ordinance doesn't spell out any overlay districts. It's not set in this ordinance, it's set through the zoning ordinance, which the Planning Commission is working on their recommendation now. And I welcome attorneys offering further perspective on this, but that's my understanding. So it certainly can be a part of the conversation, but it's not a motion that we can make with this particular ordinance. What we can do is change the number of retailers in anticipation of that, or we can ask, you know, request that the Planning Commission consider that in a resolution that follows, but it's not, we wouldn't be changing amendment language to this ordinance. Attorney Murphy, anything further you can elaborate on?
That's correct. Councilmember James, the, the zoning ordinance is going to be the ordinance that creates the amendments to the zoning ordinance for the zoning districts that will allow for recreational use of marijuana, and, and the regulatory ordinance that we're looking at tonight does not create the zoning districts.
Councilman.
Okay, let me ask a question, then. What do I need to do? How do we go about restoring the, all of the aspects of the non-overlay district as they are in the medical marijuana, in the documentation that we have for the medical marijuana program? How do we go about, you know, going back to restore that original overlay district? Because we have changed, what's going before planning is different than what we have in the medical marijuana. It's, you know, we reduced the, the number of businesses, we did a couple of things there differently. So even if we... So even if we decide to wait for the planning commission to make a decision on what we did, we have already, we've changed what that, what that district would look like. And so my question is, how do we go back to requesting that we reestablish the non-overlay district without any changes? Because we have changed what is being considered in planning. That has already been changed.
I believe a couple of meetings prior to this one, there was either a recommendation or a resolution that the council made that was to be sent to the planning commission for it to consider a Woodward district.
Mm-hmm.
So I think you could follow that same process, to ask the planning commission to consider a non-overlay district at their next meeting, where there would be proper public notice for that. So it'd be similar to the, it was either a recommendation or a resolution that the council made a couple of council meetings ago with respect to the Woodward district. And you, you would have to do the same thing today to put that back on the agenda for the planning commission.
I'm still, still a little confused with it.
This might be helpful.
It's still, it's still putting it in the hands of the planning commission. I guess what I'm asking is, how do we bring this back into, into the arms of the, of the city council?
Ultimately, it will always come back here. And so, no matter what, it's a recommendation for the zoning, which includes districts, comes, it has to originate with planning, in that they make a recommendation to us. And then we will have two readings, and we ultimately will be able to make that decision. So ultimately, will be a council decision. The administration with the ordinance that they put forth for initial consideration includes three districts. Downtown, Walton, Caesar Chavez. So that sort of starting point with the planning commission, that was originated with the administration and staff, they, the staff is recommending, that's what happens with the districts through the zoning that's right now with the planning commission. What we get to decide with this, that impacts that, is the number of retailers, among other changes. That, that's really the primary way that we can, with this ordinance, anticipate that or try and be nimble on that front.
So, under the Zoning Enabling Act, which governs a city like Pontiac, it's, there's a mandate that zoning ordinances or amendments to zoning ordinance have to arise through the planning commission process with a public hearing, and then a recommendation to city council. So that's why there's this separate body that has to make a recommendation, which the council has a choice of accepting, modifying, or rejecting when, when, when the recommendation comes to the council. But it's a, it's a requirement under state law that it has to start with the planning commission.
President Proton Carrington? Or you have a follow-up again?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused as well. And I really don't, don't, I know we, I know that we've been going, going over this, because if you look at Section 11, location criteria, and its current ordinance, this is something we created. The over, the non-overlay district has already been created in the medical marijuana district. We based this off the medical marijuana ordinance, but we removed the non-overlay.
Yeah.
So I'm kinda confused how we have to go back to the zoning, when we, we are in the planning process of making a recreational marijuana ordinance. So that's where I'm, I'm just trying to understand your process. But when you look at Section 11, location criteria, it says, "No marijuana business is eligible to receive a permit unless at the time the application for the marijuana business operating permit is submitted, the location of the proposed business operation complies with the requirements set forth in the city zoning ordinance as required for specific type of marijuana commercial businesses, which permit is being sought. No adult-use marijuana retailers shall be permitted outside of the adult-use marijuana businesses overlay districts as set forth in the city zoning ordinance as amended." Now, if this has already been voted on and approved, I can see your point. But we haven't finalized this document. It's a floating document. And if I'm wrong, you know, I, I can be corrected, but it just not making total sense from what I'm reading if we in the fundamental stages of building a recreational ordinance.
No, I understand your point. The references to the zoning ordinance in the regulatory ordinance are basically saying, if you're applying and you're, wanna seek a permit and you're trying to get points, you have to comply with the zoning ordinance in order to get the permit. And all the references in the regulatory ordinance to the zoning basically refer back to the zoning ordinance. So if the council at some point in time in the future decides to add the non-overlay back, this particular section would have to be amended to conform with the zoning ordinance.
But currently, have the zoning amended, uh, the zoning ordinance reflect removing the non-overlay districts out of, have they changed that? Because from my understanding, the zoning commission haven't done any of this.
I think a better clarifying question might be, for everyone's benefit. Right now, there is a medical marijuana downtown district, a medical marijuana Walton district, a medical marijuana Caesar Chavez district, and a medical marijuana non-overlay district. There are no currently adult-use marijuana districts in the city of Pontiac. Is my statement correct?
That's correct.
So we might generally anticipate what that is, but that doesn't exist yet. And those have to exist through the zoning ordinance that is to come. That's currently churning through the planning commission, hasn't gotten to us yet. So we have yet to create, ultimately with law, any districts for adult-use marijuana in the city of Pontiac. They just don't exist yet. Now, we, we anticipate what that might be, and we've made some policy decisions, working with some of those understandings. So when we have voted over the last few months, we've voted with the anticipation and making policy based on what we anticipate those districts to be, but those don't exist in their final form yet. Councilman Nicholson, and then for a second time, Councilwoman James?
We also voted after deliberating with our legal counsel, which, you know, I don't really even know why at this point, based on the fact of what some of my colleagues have said, why we even did a closed session if we're not gonna listen to our attorney, but instead listen to special interest attorneys, and especially some of the most well-funded organizations that are out there. Of course, they're going to come in front of us and say, "This is what you should be doing, Pontiac," because it's, where's the dollar? Where is the financial interest? Who pays them? To me, that's where, the financial interest to me, you know, and the reason why I don't, I haven't recused myself is because, I'll say again, which I said last week and got a letter from an attorney saying, "Just tell the public," even though I have said, "I have no ownership, financial stake, financial interest, other than the fact that potentially my business will fall somewhat nearby of another marijuana, of a marijuana business." I have an alcohol business. They cannot co-locate. So, but, so that is, to put that out there, they cannot legally co-locate. I will lose my liquor license if I try to do anything within this industry in that seam, in that locale. Beyond that, we, we did make a recommendation, we voted for that recommendation. So in my opinion, if we want to change that recommendation, we would have to then have, we would have to, I would, I would, because I believe it was my, my amendment, that we would have to, I would have to ask to reconsider. Or somebody else could make a, another amendment to undo what we voted on. And now, Councilwoman James did vote against that amendment, so I understand her interest in wanting to reconsider that. However, you know, again, the reality is, if marijuana comes downtown, all of the parking spaces behind my business are already leased. I lose all the parking for my customers. I, I, the, the upside of this, you know, stringing this along would be in my interest. It's not. I, I don't have an interest. There's zero interest. What happens downtown? If somebody is consuming marijuana, my business actually has to refuse them service. If somebody is visibly intoxicated and ebriated, I cannot serve them anymore. So realistically, it doesn't give me a financial uptick. Certainly, it gives somebody who wants to sell their property a financial uptick. That's, black and white. I mean, it's, that is concrete.
And you shared last week that you do not own property in that.
Do not own, the only parcel of property I own is 114 Ottawa Drive, located in District 2 of Pontiac, Michigan.
Councilwoman James, for a second time?
Yeah. First of all, with all due respect to Councilwoman Nicholson, I do have to say that my concerns about this have nothing to do with listening to different attorneys and different opinions. But my concern is to make a decision that is as fair and as equitable as we possibly can, and that would be in the best interest of the city. Now, that is my opinion, and really, my opinion hasn't changed. This was originally what I, I said, that I thought that we should keep the four, over, the four districts that the original ordinance called for. Now, what we did, my, I thought, your, Mr., our president is saying that we have not established the districts, but I think what we've, you know, what we have done is agreed to keep three of them and get rid of one. And so, we have done something in terms of those, those districts. We have made a change from what the original marijuana ordinance outlined, the four districts that the previous council worked through, those four districts. We agreed to remove one of those. We agreed to change the number of businesses from 20, because there were each allocated five. We agreed to change it from 20 to 15. And then we adjusted that from 15 to the 18, after we agreed to go, you know, to request the planning commission to approve the Woodward overlay. So I, I'm still saying, and I, I'm not understanding what council is saying. I am recommending that we reconsider bringing back the non-overlay district as it is defined in the, in the medical marijuana, as the four districts are described in the medical marijuana ordinance. I am recommending bringing that district back as a city council decision. Now, I, I guess, the question is, how, what do I need to do? Do we need to go all the way back to where we removed that district out of the, out of the play? Because we, we were all basing this on the districts that were in the original ordinance. Well, I haven't heard any discussion of any other, any new districts. So, I, I mean, my understanding is that we were basing this on the current districts.
Any further discussion? Councilman Nick, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Goodman, for a first time, he did have a hand.
So, one thing I wanna say is to Councilman Nicholson's previous point, we do pay, and this is not to direct it to your comment, we do pay a city attorney to do the work that we have them do. And the, I also take concern, and again, not directed towards you, we don't, we don't pay an entire law firm the amount of money that we do to sit here and choose the words of lawyers who work for, literally, and I mean this with no hyperbole, no abiding way of saying this, the largest interests in cannabis in the state of Michigan. And I, I do think that we, as a body, whose interests are in that of the citizens, of the small businesses, the people who do the work and live in the city and have to actually, hopefully, put money into their community and revitalize and circulate it as much as possible, that when we're looking at this and having this discussion, that we're keeping in mind not just what sounds nice, or what the big-money interests can come to us and say, because let's recognize that they've been coming to this room, speaking as if they themselves are not the people who are not going to go if this does not go their way. Like, it's being mentioned as if these people will not leave. The people who are saying that they will not leave are the people who are sitting in this room. And I think it's very important for us to be aware of that while we're having this discussion. Because personally, I want whatever this ordinance to look like to be in the best interests of the majority of the 60,000 residents that call the city home, not just the people who have the ability to, to have businesses in the city, because not everyone's able to do that. You know, there, we have to make sure that when we're doing work, we're being mindful of the people who we're helping and how to, at least in my opinion, do the greatest amount of good with the decisions that we're doing, that we're making. So I just want that to be a, a really relevant thing in all of our minds as we're doing this. Because again, I think there is obviously something, there is obviously an idea of what is fair, what is the, the most valuable use case. I just want us to be able to find it, and to do so with the intentions of our city as a whole at mind, and do so with a, a lens that is not, to, to not find a better word, tainted, with the, the, the opinions, again, of larger interests, when we're having the discussion about what will be the most major thoroughfare in the city, where almost all of the economic development will happen. Because we are develop, we are redeveloping Woodward. That will happen, M.Daw will spend all that money. So we have to be very aware that while we're doing this work, that we are setting the precedent, not only for what's happening for us, but for every council and mayor's office after this. Because we are not gonna get another once-in-a-lifetime redevelopment of Woodward. And I want us to be aware that the decisions that we make, period, when it comes to defining our city's legacy and the, the way that we want to really make this a place for the 60,000 residents who call here home, and who will eventually likely increase that number and continue to call this place home, that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we're fighting for their interests above everything else.
Proton Carrington?
Uh, thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to thank Councilman Goodman for that very passionate argument when it comes to capitalism. I also follow that same concept. I'm totally against capitalism. But I also, I wanna understand when he said what's best for the community of Pontiac. If you kick out the biggest businesses in the marijuana industry, that have the biggest resources, right? We have the best benefit agreements with community organizations, how is that the best for the citizens of Pontiac? So I wanna get back to the, the main question. Councilwoman James made a motion. I don't think she can make the motion, because she voted opposite of the motion that removed the non-overlay district. But I think that anybody that voted yes can bring that motion back, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, President McGinnis?
There was no such motion. There was a motion to change the retailers from 20 to 15. That's what we did six weeks ago or something, that was centered on the conversation of going from four districts to three. Okay, I'm talking. I'll see his hand. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That is what we can do with this ordinance. In that process, the administration drafted the zoning ordinance, the next final leg of this process, and they put in three, not four. That was where they started the recommendation for the zoning ordinance. So that's where those districts set up. There is no motion that we can reconsider when it comes to language about overlay or non-overlay. There might be one minor amendment that might change how a district is referenced, and we can still amend that. But the action that we took with this ordinance, we changed the number of retailers. And that was done aligning with the question of what we anticipated districts to come. Clerk Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, let me be very clear, I'm not speaking as relates to policy. That's not the role of the clerk, that's the role of the city council, as the elected officials. But, in reality, there is no non-overlay. There are three medical marijuana districts in the medical ordinance. Walton, Caesar Chavez, and Downtown. And then the ordinance says, no more than five provisioning centers can locate anywhere that is zoned C1, C2, C3, outside of one of the medical marijuana overlay districts. We just refer to it as the non-overlay, since we reviewed applications by district. So, the wording in this proposed regulatory ordinance, which says that, the pro temp reference that, "No marijuana retailer shall be permitted outside an adult-use marijuana business overlay district," would indeed prohibit anybody from being able to, in a sense, be in what we're referring to as the non-overlay. So that... So, that would have to be removed out of this particular ordinance. The medical ordinance that was approved by the voters, because it wasn't done by council, ordinance 2357B, made no reference to locations at all. It was all done in the zoning ordinance. It just said that there should be no more than 20 provisioning centers in the city of Pontiac, and then that was all decided in the zoning ordinance. So, I hope that provides some clarification.
I still have a request for discussion, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Grimaldi, followed by Councilman Nicholson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The clerk's point is well-taken, and I'd be curious to know the city attorney's thoughts about that. Setting aside the policy question about whether or not to allow marijuana establishments along Woodward or anywhere else outside of the three overlay districts included as part of the medical marijuana zoning ordinance, what I understand the city's attorney to be saying is that restrictions or allowances about where dispensaries can go, under state law, can only be made through a zoning ordinance, which, again, by state law, must start before the planning commission, that whatever the planning commission recommends will then come before city council, which can, as city council always can, when it comes to a zoning recommendation from planning commission, modify that. Is that accurate?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Goodman, excuse me, Councilman Nicholson.
So, the original decision regarding the non-overlay district started with a conversation of the Zoning and Enabling Act, and our interest in wanting to, should, why are we setting up these specific zones and commercial districts, primarily in commercial districts, to limit their budding neighborhoods or areas of the city that would not be as permissible? Adding the, adding the non-overlay back in is essentially a potpourri district, allows you to go anywhere you want within the city. So, that was, that was, you know, us, again, exercising our ability within the Zoning and Enabling Act to consider where these districts should be. The everywhere else district was what we heard many people come before us to complain about, and their frustration, I certainly got that from my district, because my district doesn't have any other of these zones. What is, what is frustrating is, we seem to keep changing our opinion and our conjecture based on who's standing and who does their comment. And that is where I keep going back to, to say, we had really great, very meaty conversations with legal counsel, talking about what is the city able to legally, should we consider any aspect of this, of these regulations? Now, my answer to President Pro Tem's question about why does the city, who benefits? When the largest of the organizations come in, and they align themselves on what will, I'm sure, be called We Word Boulevard, and they're all one big strip, and this is where the population center of southeastern Oakland County enters our city, there, where else will they go when they have the five largest organizations who have the largest subset of product and services there? If you say, well, then that's great, then the little guy shouldn't be able to compete, then I guess we disagree. But that's my perspective, if you wanted it, yes, the question, I gave you an answer.
Other discussion? So, I certainly hear, where Council, Councilman Goodman, Councilwoman James wants that to be an active part of the deliberations as we finalize adult-use marijuana broadly in Pontiac, that the legalization of that should involve the option of a non-overlay district. The city council will have that opportunity with first and second readings after the planning commission recommendation. I don't have a clear answer yet on what the planning commission recommendation ultimately will be. All I know so far is just the initial zoning language that the staff submitted for them to start considering. And that has adult-use marijuana downtown, Cesar Chavez, Walton. The language doesn't speak to non-overlay district, but I'm still not clear on whether that can be something that planning commission incorporates into their recommendation regardless. That's something that the administration, through the planning division, and the city's attorneys are going to have to make clear, and also, what needs to be done so that way, because ultimately, it's the city council that will make, decide that. It will decide the number of districts, et cetera. There's just some hurdles with the state law that has to be cleared when it comes to map amendments, text amendments, as it relates to zoning. There's just a lot more hurdles and thresholds. So, what we could do as a body is not ultimately adopt this item until we know everything with zoning, like that is, we can do them with finality at the end, so that way, the retailer's number lines up perfectly, the final language lines up perfectly, that be it, because there's essentially, I think, three options where we're headed to as a community. Will adult-use marijuana retailers be permitted in Cesar Chavez, Walton, and Downtown alone? Or will it be Cesar, Walton, Downtown, plus Woodward? Or, my third hand, if Councilman Goodman wants to hold it up, is Cesar, Walton, Downtown, and non-overlay. Those are essentially the three sort of contenders that have now been in the conversation. I'm not saying any of those have the most votes, or will have the most support, but it's one of those three options. And from my understanding of the motion, or the sentiment that you're bringing to the table, is you want not just these two options in the mix, you want the third option of the three specific districts, and then, to Clerk Doyle's point, the no district, district, you know, sort of the at-large, the non-overlay. That is your, that is what you're bringing to the table, you would like that in the mix.
Yes. Can I speak, Mr. President?
Yes.
Because originally, you know, my, my position was that I felt it was in the best interest of the city to acknowledge those businesses that had already been part of the marijuana process in this city for X number of years. Those businesses that we have issued provisional approval for medical marijuana, and I felt that it was in our best interest to acknowledge those businesses and to allow those businesses the opportunity to transition to recreational marijuana. That's always been my position, you know, it's not that I'm listening to this one or that one, it's my position that that is the best interest of this city. Now, the arguments that have come up from my honored council people, I believe, extends beyond our responsibility, because the market, you know, we're trying to decide who's going to make it and who's not. And I genuinely believe that's simply out of our range. I don't think it's something that we can resolve. I think all we can do is get ourselves in a lot of trouble, trying to figure out, you know, what's the best scenario, who's going to make it, who's not. Let's let the market take care of that. Let's look at where we are as a city, what we have already done, we have already approved medical marijuana, we have already approved 20 businesses with provisional licenses, and in my opinion, we are doing ourselves a favor to allow those businesses the opportunity to transition to medical marijuana, or to recreational marijuana, and to let the process take care of itself. And again, what we do with our Woodward, the development on Woodward, what we do with Downtown requires a plan, and we need to work to develop what that plan looks like, but I don't think we need to make this decision into a plan for Downtown development or Woodward Avenue development. That is my, my thought.
Councilman Goodman?
Just make a very quick point. Part of the work that we do is to set the pathway for the city going forward. There's a reason why we have master plans and zoning ordinances. If we truly wanted to let the market decide, we would just allow any business to do whatever they want, and just to let, let the market decide whether or not they stay open or not. But we don't do that. There's a reason why we have, we complain constantly about the number of dollar stores in our city. There is a, there is an actual number that we should stop at. If that was not the case, just let them open up as many as they want, and let the market decide. Unfortunately, based on the community response and how we look at the community, in the case of dollar stores, we recognize that letting the market decide got us to where we are currently, and none of us really want to be here. So, if we're going to sit here and let the market decide, the market has decided that Pontiac does not deserve a major grocery store. The market has decided that Downtown should be empty. The market has decided that we should have essentially dollar stores in every single possible corner. However, we have recognized that that might not be the best solution. So, I think that, you know, having the letting the market decide decision, yes, the, we live in a capitalist society, I, we, I know how economic development works, I know how money flows through the city, and it's very important to make sure that we're allowing businesses to do that, because a thriving city requires thriving businesses. But, that does not mean just letting everything just run a ramshackle through our city. There is a part that comes to creating economic development, but making sure that it's going in a direction that truly does benefit not only the residents, but again, the businesses who we truly do want to help, because not every business needs, needs the same here. There is a reason why we have federal laws about some of these situations, not just letting the market decide. And we, as a city, have the ability to do so. Not saying that we should steer the market and just say completely that we should do very specific things, but we do have the ability to at least give a guiding hand to what we believe is in the best interests of the city. We have that ability, and I fully believe that we should use it when it makes sense.
Do you want the foregiving?
Yeah. So, one thing I do think, though, if that is the interest, one thing that would be in what, if we're going to move forward in voting for this, the, the number of facilities that was changed doesn't necessarily lend itself to support the people who had, I know our scoring process, of course, does give them some encouraging scores, the, the number, though, was changed. So, if, even if Woodward were to, if we had the planning commission's, you know, recommendation, and we moved forward in saying Woodward is what we need to do, and that, there are five medical, you know, there are five that have, you know, those applications have moved forward to the state. At this point, our current numbers, I believe, only say three that would be left over. So, regardless of what would happen, we aren't going to give all five of those their credence, if that's, if that's what we, what your interest is. So, what I would, I would say is if we are not going to wait, we should still, though, if, and we are going to pass this, we should consider, you know, it's not in my best opinion to continue to up the number of licenses. However, three will not do that, and I can promise you that if, if what they're saying is true, that whoever doesn't get a license is going to sue, regardless of how, then there's still going to be, if we pass this today, and everything that we wanted there to be, you know, accomplished there, there's two, there's two of the fat cats on our tail. So, you know, I would say if you, if your interest is, you know, just throw away the key, open up the floodgate, get rid of the infrastructure surrounding it, I'd up the number, if that's what you want to do. But I think, you know, the other things, like we said, are a matter of zoning, that is a matter of our ordinance.
I would encourage us not to focus too much on prospective future applicants for a not-yet-enacted ordinance that will look more policy-wise, but when it comes to the question of the option of a non-overlay district in the mix, I get the sense that with this ordinance, that we don't plan on voting on this tonight. Is that the vibe, that we still want to allow for the zoning details to be further worked out? But, so, we would, essentially, just like we've done with any other amendment, let's allow the city's attorneys to draft up what that language would look like. If there's an amendment that needs to align this with that scenario, that they can, in the next few days, draft up what the amendment to this ordinance might need to be, to provide that as an option. What we can do after we postpone this, if that's the will of the council tonight, is that we can ask, or if there's, if there's any merit to us providing a resolution that encourages the planning commission to consider that also as an alternative option, if there's, if it's deemed to be a better or a more viable alternative to a Woodward gateway district. But, so, we don't have to decide that just yet. Pro Tem Carrington?
Well, I'll let you finish, if you have to add anything, then I will.
Well, so, really, since we're not going to force, you know, our hand to say that we're having the final vote on this ordinance tonight, we can do the 12 amendments, clear the tables, see where we, you know, the dust settles, which ones pass, which ones fail, and then in the coming week, we'll have potentially additional amendments that we'll either have at our disposal or consider, because I get the sense that we're going to want to have a final, clean, tight ordinance for adult-use businesses that squarely aligns with whatever the zoning final determination is, primarily, what are the districts and what are the implications of it? So, that way, the language is as aligned as possible. So, if there's no objection, we can start considering the amendments that we've had before us for the last eight or nine days. But, Pro Tem Carrington, anything alternative to that?
Well, I'm good. I actually will pass for now.
So, regarding the adult-use marijuana business ordinance, we have a document that identifies 12 proposed amendments that the city's attorneys and others in the administration, and we can say item by item, including council members, have identified. The first is changing the word facility to establishment, and on page 12, that's section 10D, on page 16, that's section 12B, 16F, on page 17, that's section 12B18, and section 25B11 on page 38. And so, the rationale that the attorney has offered is that, the reason is that the facility term has technical meaning in the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, and the city wants to distinguish medical facilities from adult-use establishments. Only safety-compliance facilities are referred to as facilities in both the medical and adult-use statutes. So, if this motion to amend is made, it's in those areas identified, it changes the word facility to establishment. Attorney Murphy, would you like to elaborate further?
Sure. The, the four replacements, the word facility was used in more of its commonly-used definition, and I wanted, I thought it was important to avoid confusion, if there's some dispute later on, over what the meaning of that was, since it is a term of art in the Facilities Licensing Act and in the recreational statute, so, it's really an attempt to clarify that and avoid confusion in the future, to replace the word facility with the word establishment.
Is there a council member that would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Goodman, that the ordinance under discussion, that the word facility be placed with establishment in those instances that have been stated and written. So, that motion is before us. Any discussion? Pros, cons, questions of clarifications? It's been before us for about nine, 10 days, so we've been able to digest and research it. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on that proposed amendment to the adult-use marijuana business ordinance, changing the word facility to establishment in those four identified areas. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeses, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment has passed, and so the, the final ordinance language will be updated accordingly. Secondly, on, in section 12B29, it's talking about scaled location area maps Secondly, on, in Section 12B29, it's talking about scaled location area maps that identifies the relative locations of and distances from public parks containing playground equipment and provide that the measurement for buffering distances from public parks should be based on public parks without a reference to playground equipment. Councilwoman James flagged this at a previous reading of this ordinance, and so if this amendment is, is so proposed, it strikes in Section 12B subsection 29. It strikes the phrase "containing playground equipment" and "from the playground equipment." So that way, the language just removes that playground equipment reference. Is that still your motion, Councilwoman James?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman James, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that the "containing playground equipment" and "from the playground equipment" language be striked in Section 12B subsection 29. Attorney Murphy, any further context you'd like to provide this council?
Well, the prior zoning ordinance for medical created a 500-foot buffer from public parks, and there was some concern with one particular park where some playground equipment disappeared overnight, and there was a concern about not having to change the buffering measurements based on where playground equipment was located. In addition, apparently, parks are going to be renovated and playground equipment's going to be moved, so the, the thinking was that it, it was a more feasible measurement to measure to the entranceway to the park from the controlled use, which would be a marijuana facility.
And so to clarify, this does not have any ramifications or bearing on setback distance or would it? Is it, it's not changing necessarily the definition, it's just changing the scaled map, what they're required to submit with the application, sort of what the scaled map would, would and would not have to reference. So it's bringing back on the requirement, they would have to have maps on their, parks on their maps, it's not just parks with playgrounds.
Well, it would be a public park, and this really dictates how you measure the buffering distance from the controlled use to the park, instead of it being to the playground equipment on the park would be to the entrance to the park or the closest location where the park begins from the, the measuring technique that's used in the zoning ordinance.
Councilwoman James?
Yeah, are we still going to use the 500 feet because that's not in there, or is that still going to be the standard that we're looking at?
The 500 feet is going to be in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
But it's still 500 feet.
Okay.
Clerk Doyle, practically speaking through the medical marijuana application process, did you receive feedback from any past applicants in terms of the, the scale location map as it related to parks? Any, any feedback or intel that jogs your memory as it related to playground equipment versus no playground equipment?
So, Mr. President, what this all stems from is the previous administration was trying to label Hidden River Park Downtown that's gathering space as a park. So that's why a reference was made to playground equipment, since no playground equipment existed in Hidden River Park. But that subsequently has come out of our master plan, Hidden River Park, because it was in the master plan. So that was the only reason why that was put in there. So, because it would have eliminated a number of the downtown options for medical marijuana sites.
So I'll let Councilwoman James have the floor before I, before I give you the floor.
Well, I, I would, would just say that Hidden River Park was really never, you know, a park has to be a park because it's been designated as a park by a city, and it's been included in that approved Parks and Rec master plan, which Hidden River Park was never a park to an approved Parks and Recreation master plan. So it really was never really a, a park at all.
Hidden River Plaza.
Just, just to clarify, it actually was in the Parks and Masters Plan, and the previous council took it out of that master plan, so where it couldn't be classified as a park.
The master plan, the older master plan was amended to include Hidden River Park?
No, to, to remove it, to remove it from. It was initially in the master plan, and the council took it out of the master plan.
It, it took it out of the proposed master plan, but that...
Existing older one.
Yeah, the older master plan, it was never in the approved, that's why I use the word approved. The master plan that was posted on the website, Hidden River was never a part of the approved master plan, which was expired, by the way, for the city of Pontiac. So it was, the discussion was in the proposed master plan, which is now the new master plan for Parks and Rec.
All I say is it, it was removed out of the master plan, so where it would not be an issue.
Yes.
In this matter.
Yeah.
Attorney Murphy, further information you'd like us to provide or for us to deliberate?
I did review the scaled location maps that were submitted by the 20 conditionally-approved medical marijuana applicants, and I didn't find any where the buffering to the park was an issue by changing this playground equipment definition. They were all, most, almost all of them were more than 1,000 feet away from parks. In fact, most of them were 2,000 feet away from parks.
So any other rationale? I mean, so the current medical ordinance uses this language, and your hope and intent for it to create essentially more broad or a different language, is it just to make it cleaner and tidier, or is there other implications that you'd like to, for council to consider?
You mean for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, that the, the fact that we're using playground equipment as a measurement is, is totally inappropriate. If the idea is that we don't want these businesses that close to parks because children and families are playing in those parks, you need to be looking at the measurement of the park itself because the child could be playing anywhere in that park. If that's the idea, that we want to keep these things separated from, you know, children being at play, we don't want to look at where a piece of play equipment is in the park because then that, then you're looking at, you know, the possibility of your moving play equipment to qualify various people, to be able to qualify to have a business there, and I don't think we really want to do that. I think we want to look at how close that business is to the entrance, to the perimeter of the park itself, understanding that children can play in any place in the park. You know, whether there's play equipment or not, most parks do have play equipment, but whether there's play equipment or not, the children can play in any part of that park, so we don't want to signal out play equipment and say, we're going to measure from this piece of play equipment. That doesn't really make sense. We need to measure from the perimeter of the park and assume that in, anywhere in that park, children and families can be playing, and we want this business to be X distance away from that activity. So I, I think this change gives us what we want here.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the proposed amendment, which would eliminate the reference to a scaled location area map that identifies the relative locations of and distances from public parks containing playground equipment and make it more so the primary point of ingress to, to the park. So Clerk Doyle, roll call.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes. Next, it's on pages 20 and 21, it's Section 13C. It's proposed to be amended that it would read that, that letter C. After 60 days from the effective date of this ordinance, the clerk shall begin accepting adult-use marijuana business applications for a permit to operate a grower, comma, processor, comma, secure transporter, comma, safety-compliance facility, comma, marijuana event organizer, comma, and temporary marijuana event, period. Next, the other limited license types, dash, retailer, comma, social equity retailer, comma, class A microbusiness, and designated consumption establishment, dash, have a 21-day application window set by the clerk after the 60 days in Section 13E. So I want to hear if there's a motion and a second before we give the floor to the attorney to give further rationale. Is there a council member who wishes to move that amendment?
Did you, you're reading C, item C on page 20?
Pages 20 and 21, it's Section 13C. It would be proposed that this would be the language. Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that this amendment be considered, so it's now before us. Attorney Murphy, any context?
Basically, 13C originally, just basically said, after 60 days from the effective date of the ordinance, the clerk shall be in accepting adult-use marijuana business applications. And there, in the subsequent 13E section, it's a 60-day window, but then the clerk sets a 21-day application window for retailer, social equity retailer, class A microbusiness, and designated consumption establishment. So the concern was clarifying that, that 60-day period without the 21-day window applies to the unlimited permit types, so there's no confusion with respect to the respective windows when they open up.
Clerk Doyle, I want to get your feedback on this, since you'll be facilitating.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this mirrors the language that's somewhat in the, the medical ordinance. The, once they, we started accepting applications, we accepted for grower, processor, but there was a 21-day window for competitive applications. And what this really does is allow them the opportunity to gather their stuff, unlike the ones that are scored. If something is deficient, they get the opportunity to cure that deficiency, but the applications that score, whatever you submit, it's as is, and then, you know, you're scored accordingly.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the proposed amendment that speaks to Section 13C, the proposed new language. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes, and so that will be incorporated into the updated language for the ordinance. Next, Section 13F. It's on page 22. Proposed, proposing to amend Section 13F to provide that the point-based scoring and ranking procedure shall be approved by city council resolution. So it adds the phrase, after ranking procedure, it says, inserts, "which shall be approved by city council resolution," followed by a comma. So if that is moved and seconded, I'll read the whole thing.
Move by Carrington.
Zip, report.
So it's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington and seconded by Councilman Parker, so that amendment is before us right now. Section 13F on page 22 would be, instead, now read, if this amendment passes. In its application assessment, evaluation, scoring, ranking, and deliberations related to permits to operate a retailer, social equity retailer, class A microbusiness, and designated consumption establishment, the clerk shall assess, evaluate, score, and rank each application based upon a point-based scoring and ranking procedure which shall be approved by city council resolution, consistent with the requirements, conditions, and provisions of this ordinance in each of the following categories, followed by a colon, and then the language continues. But that's Section 13F as the amendment proposed. Attorney Murphy?
The function of this is so that the scoring criteria guide, once it's published, is, got the imprimatur of a city council resolution as opposed to just coming from the clerk, and I, we think that in the future, that'll avoid some legal challenges to whether or not the clerk has authority to develop scoring criteria guides from the scoring categories that are already in the ordinance.
You hear that? We'll get to have some more fun with it in the future. Another, another round of deliberations. Any discussion on the amendment before us? All right, so this just adds the language that this point-based scoring and ranking procedure shall be approved by city council resolution. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the proposed amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes. The ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Next, following is Section 13F subsection 2. This is also on page 22. It's proposed to be amended to incorporate the sanitation plan and odor plan required as part of the application into an existing scoring category on whether the business will have a detrimental impact on the surrounding area. The added language is underscored. So this is the language that would be added, and then if the, the motion is made, then we can recap it again. But it adds the language, "applicant shall submit a sanitation plan designed to protect against any marijuana being ingested on the premises by any person or animal," comma, "describing how the waste and byproduct will be stored and disposed of," comma, "and how any marijuana will be rendered unusable upon disposal," period. "The sanitation plan shall include a copy of the proposed contract between the applicant and sanitation waste provider," period. "Applicant shall submit an odor control plan satisfying the criteria in Section 15 of this ordinance," period. Is there a motion to amend?
Move by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by President Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, so it's now before us. Again, this is subsection 2 in Section 13F, page 22, for those following along. It would read, "whether the proposed marijuana business will have a detrimental impact on the surrounding area and neighborhood, including the distance of the establishment to properties zoned or using residentially, traffic patterns, traffic mitigation, and resident safety, plans for litter control, loitering, noise mitigation, odor mitigation, applicant shall submit a traffic study by a professional traffic engineer. Applicant shall submit a sanitation plan designed to protect against any marijuana being ingested on the premises by any person or animal, describing how the waste and byproduct will be stored and disposed of, and how any marijuana will be rendered unusable upon disposal. The sanitation plan shall include a copy of the proposed contract between the applicant and sanitation waste provider. Applicant shall submit an odor control plan satisfying the criteria in Section 15 of this ordinance. The maximum number of scoring points in this category shall be 20 points." So that's what we have before us, the amendment as proposed for the section that's been referenced. So for Pontiac residents, this is even stronger, making sure that we're protecting and safeguarding our, our neighbors and our residents from litter, loitering, noise mitigation, odor, sanitation issues, and making sure that obviously they have a very, these businesses have a very high threshold that they have to meet when it comes to the state of Michigan, and we're just making sure that the language is clear and precise as possible when it comes to scoring in the category, that they're being as proactive and, and, and forward-thinking as possible to make sure that they are good neighbors to their surrounding businesses and the neighborhoods nearby. Attorney Murphy, anything further you'd like to share?
Basically, tho, those provisions that we're seeking to add were already a requirement in the application section of the ordinance, and it just seemed to make more sense if we're requiring it as part of that, to make it part of the scoring criteria that addresses detrimental impact on the surrounding area. So it was really a consideration of, when the scorers are looking at this, giving them a little more detail, and also giving the applicants more detail about what's required to get the, the 20 points.
Thank you. Discussion on the amendment before us. Hearing no discussion. We've had a number of days to review it and dive deeper into it. Speaker's list concluded. Roll call on approval of the proposed amendment for Section 13F subsection 2, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment is passed, and the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Next, Section 13F subsection 4. This is on page 23. It proposed to be amended to incorporate some additional application requirements into the existing scoring category about significant physical investments and improvements. The added language would be financial structure, comma, source of financing, comma, development and build-out budget, and projected initial operating budget of the proposed marijuana business, and... Is there such a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we make the amend, that the amendment be considered. This subsection 4 would read in full, "whether the applicant or its stakeholders have made or plan to make significant physical investment and improvements to the..." and improvements to the building where the proposed marijuana business is to be located, including the applicant's financial structure, source of financing, development, and build-out budget, and projected initial operating budget of the proposed marijuana business, and proposed tangible capital investment, the current and proposed condition of the proposed location, and the applicant's ownership stake in the location of the establishment, the maximum number of scoring points in this category shall be 10 points." Attorney Murphy, anything further?
Like the previous one, Council President, this is already a requirement in the application section, and it just makes more sense to incorporate it into the scoring criteria for purposes of the benefit, to benefit the scorers and also the applicants, so they know what they need to put into their application in order to get those 10 points.
Any further discussion? Councilman James?
What are you calling financial structure? What, what does that mean?
That's a good question. Financial structure would be generally how they are, how their capital is organized in their entity. For example, some businesses have the capital already existing, others need to have letters of credit or loans, and so the financial structure would require them to define where the money's coming from to do their build-out.
Debt and equity. Debts and equities is the...
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the proposed amendment for section 13F 4, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the amendment passes, the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Now we're at section 13F subsection 6. It would include "the proof of a commitment to issue an insurance policy satisfying the criteria required by the ordinance as part of the scoring criteria on financial resources and capitalization." It would add this language to that subsection. "Proof of financial responsibility in the form of a commitment or letter of intent to issue an insurance policy satisfying the criteria in section 12B subsection 27 of this ordinance." Is there a motion to amend?
Support.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Attorney Murphy, can you share some of the backstory?
Yes, again, as part of the application process, there's a requirement to present proof of financial responsibility in the form of a commitment to obtain an insurance policy, and there's a minimum coverage requirements in section 12B 27. And so, the thinking was, as part of the financial resources and capitalization scoring, that that should be part of something that's a requirement in order to get the 20 points for that particular category.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. This proposed amendment is for section 13F subsection 6. Roll call on approval of the amendment, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the amendment passes, the language for the ordinance will be updated accordingly. We're now at section 13F subsection 7, page 27. It would add to the staffing plan scoring criteria additional elements that are required as part of the application. The added language would be, "A staff training and education plan that the applicant will provide to employees," semicolon, "an explanation," comma, with supporting factual data, comma, "of the economic benefits to the city and the job creation for local residents to be achieved by the establishment," semicolon, "short and long-term goals and objectives," semicolon. Is there such a motion to amend?
So moved.
Is there a second?
To board.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Parker. It's now before us. I'll give the floor first to Councilwoman James for a question.
The question is on item 7, that there's also the addition of the "and" type.
Oh, excellent. Yeah, so the first sent, sentence, or the first lines would read, "Description of staffing plan that includes the number 'and type' of full-time and part-time positions the applicant intends to create, et cetera." So the language I read of a staff training and education plan, and the language that followed, as well as that tweak to add the phrase "and type" to follow the number in that first line. Thank you, Councilwoman James, for flagging that. Attorney Murphy, the rationale?
Again, this is, the language that's being added is already in the requirements for the application, and it was felt that staff training and education and these other items that we're requiring should be part of the scoring criteria under staffing plan, so it works to the benefit of the scorers who are looking at the applications, and it also describes more fully to the applicants what they need to put into their staffing plan in order to get the points.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on the proposed amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the agenda passes, the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Now we're at section 13F 10, subsection 10, page 25. Proposing to add back "or more," the phrase "or more," which was inadvertently deleted when adding in the amendments approved last week. The added language is underscored.
Moved by Carrington.
Yeah?
Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Nicholson. It's the "or more" amendment. It's now before us. Anything else, Attorney Murphy?
No, other than when we, this was already approved by council, and then when the new draft was prepared, and I looked at it, I realized that "or more" had been inadvertently deleted, so it's being added back in. But the council already approved that language previously.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, on the proposed amendment.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the amendment is passed, and the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Now we're at section 14A, page 29. Social equity retailers. Change the number of permits from five to six, so that it conforms with the number allowed. The amended language is underscored. Again, that just changes it from five to six, which is reflected elsewhere in the ordinance. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman James. The item is before us. Anything further on that, Attorney Murphy?
No, I think it speaks for itself, Council President.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on adoption of the proposed amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the agenda pass, the amendment passes, and the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. Now we're at section 16A, page 30. It's proposed to be amended to replace "any person or any $10,000 in contract value of benefit for this, from the city," and...
Council President, could I, yeah?
Yeah.
Some of the language was cut out of this summary. It should, the original language was "any person or entity receiving more than $10,000 in contract value or benefit from the city."
Okay. And it would replace it with instead being "a permitee."
Correct.
Okay, so the mo, the motion to amend is to replace that phrase with "a permitee." Is there such? It's been moved by Nicholson, seconded by Goodman. That's now before us. So, section 16A would read, if this amendment is successful, "A permitee must use good faith efforts in hiring employees who have been negatively impacted by marijuana prohibition. Adult-use recreational marijuana businesses should use good faith efforts to hire and retain 25% of its employees who are low-income or live in the city of Pontiac." That's what's before us. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the proposed amendment, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the amendment passes, the ordinance language will be reflected accordingly. We're now at seventeen, section 17E, page 31. It's eliminating the sentence that prohibited a Class A micro-business from operating on the same parcel as another type of marijuana business. So...
So moved.
It's been moved by Nicholson. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by James, so Councilman Nicholson's moved, Councilwoman James is seconded. It would, help us out here, Attorney Murphy, we're talking about...
This amendment just makes it consistent with another provision in the ordinance where the council approved co-location of a Class A micro-business with other types of marijuana businesses.
Consistency is key. So, the, the new language for section 17E, if this amendment is successful, would read, "Class A micro-businesses are prohibited if the location is within 1,000 feet from any pre-existing school, and the distance separation requirement set forth above shall be measured from nearest property line of the business location to the nearest property line of the parcel on which the listed use is located, regardless of ownership of property or permitee." So, that's what we have. It's been moved, it's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the amendment is approved, the ordinance language will be updated accordingly. Are there other amendments that any council member wishes to bring before the floor currently, or, or request them for attorneys to craft? So, Councilwoman James has identified, at the beginning of the conversation, one that she would like to see city attorneys craft, as it relates to incorporating non-overlay as an option, as that works through the, the planning process as well. Are there others that folks want to flag?
Did we forget 37, 37...
11.
11. Yeah, 38.
Here I go. Page 38.
Item 11.
In terms of the establishment?
Mm-hmm.
That was done with our first amendment that just kind of corresponded them...
All covered both?
Yep. It flagged it. It's the final one in the language. It says, "Section 25B11" on page 38. Thank you for asking. Other, other prospective amendments or changes that this council would like to see, or concerns you'd like to flag as it relates to this business ordinance? Hearing none. Is there a motion to postpone this for one week? It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that this be postponed to the next regular meeting of the city council, which is February 7, 2023?
Mr. President, does that actually give us, can we propose, postpone for more than one week? Because does that actually do what we're intending it to do?
The short answer is yes. We may propose to go more than one week, but as we've found, as we keep going along, there's always these new...
So, it would give us a spot on the agenda if we potentially need to make a mention?
So that way we can...
Sounds good. Thank you.
Not, if time goes by and we want to do other changes, it's got that opportunity. But Clerk Doyle, did you want to flag the same thing?
Yeah.
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Carrington. Did I get that right?
Yes.
So that's a motion of postponement for one week, and it'll be on the agenda for next regular city council meeting. Hearing any, hearing no discussion on that motion to postpone. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The motion to postpone is ineffective. It is hereby postponed. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution acknowledging February as Black History Month?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, and so that item is before us. For February of 2023, declaring February this month that, to come as Black History Month in the city of Pontiac. Any discussion on the motion before us? We look forward to, as the weeks come forth, the city council will highlight ways in which the community is coming together to celebrate Black History Month, and also, as we make note of it and mark it with city hall and city operations. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the resolution celebrating February's Black History Month in Pontiac, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. We are now at, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation annual permit provision?
Moved by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by Carrington, seconded by Nicholson, now before us. We give the floor to the mayor administration for context.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to invite Mr. Cooley to the podium. We have two matters, the first of which is a item that will allow the city to perform work on city-owned property like light poles, for example, that exist within Michigan Department of Transportation right-of-way. Mr. Cooley?
Yeah, so, as the, as the mayor explained, this is an annual permit that we apply for every year. This gives us the ability to access the MDOT system. It's a free permit, by the way, but it allows us to access their system so that we can input our road closures or any of that, that we are going to do on any of the MDOT-owned trunk line throughout the, the city of Pontiac. You know, that would be Woodward and, and here on Caesar Chavez Perry Cass Avenue.
Any questions? Any deliberations? Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Just an observation of the letter that was provided. I believe you meant MDOT instead of moot.
Internal memo, on the internal memo?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's a typo. Typo.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle, and you can ask Councilwoman James's vote first before she walks out the door.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve correction to legal description for alley vacation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. It's now before us. Mayor Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll allow Mr. Cooley to get into all of the details, but this goes back literally decades to an effort by, at least, at least once, and I believe actually maybe more than once, to, by previous city councils, to vacate this alley. Importantly, our understanding is that this alley is no longer used to access any of the neighboring parcels or garages, so vacating this and allowing the private property owners to take ownership of the portions of the alley immediately abutting their properties will not create any problems for property owners in terms of access to their property. Mr. Cooley?
Yeah, so, as the mayor had stated, this, this portion of alleyway was vacated back in 1989. It's a, a larger portion of alley was done at that same time. It's a, it's a T alley that, that is in all the back easements there through Terry Street over to Hollywood. Currently, everything that was recorded has been vacated except for the half of the alley that is to this lot number. So there were some issues in the original resolution that didn't quite get the, the lang, the legal language down correctly, so there was a second attempt. So the first one was in 1989. I believe the second one was sometime in the 90s that they, that the council then attempted to get this right again. Currently, I believe the property is up for sale, and it was brought to our attention from a title company when they did their title search, that this, basically half of the, the alleyway, so when we vacate an alley, half of it goes to each adjoining property owner. So the, the half went to the prop, the one property owner has already been vacated, the half that goes to this property owner that, that is in, that the title search was being done on, was not properly recorded because of the language that was within the resolution. So, this resolution is now to clean up all that language and to make it proper, so that it goes to the property owner, is what was intended back in 1989.
Councilman Goodman, this falls within your district, and also within the sweet spot of cleaning up old, outdated, and dusty legal language and zoning kind of stuff? Anything you'd like to share? You're kosher with it?
Oh, yeah, no, I've had discussions with the administration. I've been brought to date on this, so I, I'm fine with it.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? All right. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on adoption of the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. The legal description is hereby corrected. All right. Public comment. Pro Tem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGuinness. At this time, Pastor Douglas Jones, please.
Thank you, Mr. President of Council, President Pro Tem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council, and, and our citizens of Pontiac, and all of those that are here today. You know, my purpose for standing here today is first to say thank you very much. Thank you all for the participation in the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Annual March. We had over one hundred people in that march, and that was an exciting time. And also to thank you for the participation of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Luncheon, where we were able to recognize not only several students of the McCray Scholarship Award, but also businesses that had started here in the city and have been very successful. We're pretty proud of them and some of the young people as well. So I want to thank you for that. Over two hundred and fifty people were attending that luncheon at the Pontiac Marriott Hotel, and so I want to say thank you so very, very much for that. I would like to take another minute on this to speak of the homeless situation because we're really working with Hope House, because we really need to expand that, that facility. We have to do that, to give them more occupancy, to do more things for the homeless. Many of us have been there. I think Councilman Goodman has been there. We've celebrated with them. We shared in with them their memorials. I think this past year, some sixty-two people that had passed from homeless situations so that. But the other part of that is, and we hear a lot about what the churches do or don't do, and I would tell you that the churches have been so active, not only in, in supplying rent for the, the persons who are in hotels, as the young lady spoke early on today, for supplying rental assistance for persons who are about to be evicted. We've been very active in that, in that area, as well as other needs that people have. A lot of times the churches do not just speak out on what they do. They're a very silent organization in that. They don't pat themselves on the back. But I would tell you, over the thirty-three years that I have been in this city, our city, our churches have been very, very active, very committed to the well-being, the health and welfare of the citizens, and even those who are not residents of Pontiac. So I'd like to put that shout out if I could, let people know that the churches here in the city are very, very active in all areas, all areas, and very committed, you know, to the citizens of the city and moving it forward, and are definitely committed to it. So with that, I say again, thank you. Thank you for this time, but thank each one of you for what you do and what I see. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Karen Jurgensen? Mr. Norman Elam, and then on deck, Ms. Christine Elam.
Again, let me thank the mayor and president. Now, finish up, let me finish up my previous comment on whatever it was about, don't forget. But, oh, that's what it is. I do not care what Nicholson say at all pertaining to him not benefiting from marijuana downtown Pontiac. And if he's not going to benefit from it, why is he's pushing so hard for it? If he's going to lose twelve, fifteen parking spaces, then why? Why I want it there? And if we think, if we think that marijuana downtown is going to bring us back, I believe we're sorely mistaken. My thing would be for Nicholson not to vote on anything pertaining to this adult-use marijuana downtown at all until we can get legal representation saying that he's not in conflict at all. Not on his word and not on what he says, but legal representation to say that he's not in conflict and post it. That way it stops any rumors or anything that's been said. You know, because I hear the rumors. He has this, he has that. And I take offense to either Nichols or Goodman saying weed wood. Okay? Weed word. It's Woodward, and I'm on Woodward, so I'm offended. So it's Woodward, and we want to participate in adult-use marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Christine Elam?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Pontiac City Council. It is still with great pleasure and privilege that you would afford the city of Pontiac residents to participate in this adult-use recreation marijuana wave of opportunities. It indeed shows us, Pontiac, that your willingness to go back to the planning board and say, let's take another look at our resolve that we made to keep Pontiac residents first. You see, we know and believe with this new mayor and city council of Pontiac is continuing to move forward. And so that's what I have to say. I'm still saying the same thing. Thank you, and I do like what you said, Councilman Goodman. It is our desire too, to make Pontiac look good, not trashy, not overrun, but it's our utmost desire to do that. And we will show you that we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again. I want to say that I'm constantly talking about workforce development. I want everybody to know that workforce development truly will be the answer to a lot of our issues here in Pontiac. And I'm constantly want to commend those council people who I see step forward and say they want to be inclusive of trying to build workforce development that's going to help the city as a whole. So I want to say, the initial project that I brought before a couple of weeks ago, we have got all the seats filled, and I'm asking for additional seats. Now, that right there is a testament to the fact that people are stepping forward, but I want it to be citywide. I commend the mayor. The mayor has got really behind this effort, and he's indicated that work we've been doing with TDC, he supports it. And if you guys are not familiar with what we do at TDC, which is Talent Development Coalition, we're about trying to make sure that we develop people here in Pontiac, that they can have an opportunity for high-paying, high-opportunity, and skilled positions that we really feel can make a difference here in Pontiac. I also want to say that I, I support what Councilwoman James was saying earlier about trying to make sure that we're fair from what we started out with. We can start coming with a whole lot of different issues after the fact, but that's not being fair to be people who've been in this process, especially on this marijuana issue, and we can have all these different opinions. But when you start trying to say, let's keep it fair and make it consistent, that right there makes a big difference. So when you come to the table after this right here been in, in motion for several years, think about it. I'm no fat cat here. I'm not representing no entity. I'm representing a person from Pontiac, and I hope you hear our voices just as much as you do about other people's voices. And when we say that we truly want to have an opportunity to do workforce development, I'm sharing with you the indic, the indicators I got from the folks who were coming in this city saying they wanted to help us with community benefits. They were saying they're going to help us with workforce development to help here in Pontiac. And I want to be able to make sure that that happens, and we be fair to folks. So mayor, president, council, I believe that you're going to do the right thing, and I'm hopefully that we can come together and make sure our city continues to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Quincy Stewart? Mr. Kenny Anderson? Ms. Melissa Moser Sperring?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about this article about y'all being sued by the developer for that Glenwood Plaza project. Now, I'm told by a person that attends this Pontiac No's Week here, I guess it's this community organization that Will Carrington leads, Councilwoman Angie, uh, County Commissioner Angie Power was there. This person that does not lie, is an older person, told me that you told them that you would try to get that proposed marijuana site out of the Glenwood Plaza. And that's was, I guess, last fall. This person's told me that. They called me on the phone and said they had a meeting at, I guess, some church on University, and you told them that. So, and as I read this article about this sixty million-dollar lawsuit about the delayed marijuana permits, now this is my opinion. This looks like a possible scheme to get money out of Pontiac, and I do not believe that this was a legitimate project in the first place. And I saw only, I live right near there. Only thing, I didn't see any construction. I just saw scrapping, scrapper, scrapper. No building at all, just scrapping, leaving doors out, glass, you naming. That place is a mess, and it's still a mess, and it was a mess, any term you want, tents. The place is a mess. It's just a shallow hole now. Y'all got ganked in other street language. So, I mean, so if this player, uh, the plant wins, he's either going to do one of the two things. Take y'all money and finish the project, which he shouldn't be there in the first place, or take the money, which I hope he goes elsewhere with the money, and start anew where some place is more acceptable, or maybe scrap that place. So y'all got to see how these people work. You know, and they had that big old job fair. These kids gave these people information. Nobody got hired at the place, not even nowhere near open. So their information, stuff, social security numbers floating out there. So I, you know, I don't believe this. So cut, leave the marijuana stuff alone. This is like the film industry, the film industry. Where's the film industry? Y'all need to build, y'all could take stuff from China and build it here. Radios, TVs, anything, the parts fall. If the car industry go down, get something else. All these young kids in high school, they could tell you what, what's hot and what's not. The OCC's right there. You know, you, you, this could be something. Y'all just stuck on marijuana, marijuana. Marijuana make people high. My job won't hire you. They, they, people come in afterwards and they smell like that, but they won't hire you coming in. A lot of these corporations, they're not going to hire you at all. They'll test you at random. Pontiac going to be high, none but high people. Leave the marijuana alone and quit chasing this, the money. Let's, uh, let's try another industry.
Thank you. Dr. Deidre Waterman.
So you're getting a little closer to this bringing adult-use marijuana to the city. Lot of work isn't it? So I kind of chuckled a little bit when I heard the plan originally was to get this thing through and force it through and vote on January tenth and have two readings and move it on through. And, and I said, well, you know, it's, it's a lot of work to get this done, to do it the right way, like you're trying to do. One of the things that you talked about that you did pass as an amendment today was to open up the process for scoring community benefits so that you have a quantitative, objective process. That's important. But as you do that, then you're going to have to do some work in terms of setting. What are the organizations that qualify? You know, what, how do you, how do you, how do you set the organization? I heard somebody asked last week, well, what is a neighborhood organization? What is that actually? As the last set of medical marijuana applications went on, I talked to a number of the regular neighborhood groups, the CDCs, and they said nobody had ever come to them, and they're a neighborhood organization. So it opens it up, and you get to decide who are the people who should benefit that, and what are the organizations that should be talked to, and not just somebody whispering in somebody's ear about, you know, about what they can get. So that is one thing that you'll be working on. The other thing is process. And as you were talking, Councilwoman James, about it seems backwards to have the overlay district set and Planning Commission. And let me just give you a little history. Okay. When we first started with medical marijuana, there were no districts or anything. So that was something that Planning Commission worked with, and we had more than twenty-one hearings in the city, public hearings, public meetings, because this was a new industry, the Pontiac, and we took it as a new business, economic development. And so we wanted to have the hearings to say what it was that would best benefit Pontiac to bring this new business to town, and the Planning Commission did that. They heard that. And then they had a number of hearings to decide how was the best suited for Pontiac. And we said, well, we want to have it bring economic development to areas that were needed economic development, that had vacant facilities. And so they decided to put it in the areas that had that, had that need. The sheriff said, well, you know, we want to be able to have them along major thoroughfares so that if there is violence or calls, that we have easy access to them. So we looked at that and put, put it that way. So, and then they said, well, let's make sure that they have enough utilities there. So we made sure that the DPW had looked at that and made sure there were enough utilities. So that's how they came up with the idea of the overlays. So that's how the state law says you have to decide that way. If it is council that decides it, then it's already, you already know who the applicants are. So it's almost like you're choosing winners and losers by putting it in certain areas. So it's, it's feasible that the Planning Commission does that on the basis of the economic development interest of the city.
Thank you, Dr. Waterman. Justin Juergens is, I don't see him. Ms. Jennifer Zelinski. Ms. Darlene Clark?
Hi there. I'm speaking as a resident of the city of Pontiac and as a taxpayer. I'm going to read this to you first, and then I'm going to give you further details on what I'm, why I'm saying, what I'm saying to you. This is from Councilman Brett Nicholson. Your conduct toward the former past administration, Dee Waterman, and the councilperson, District Five Gloria Miller, has been disrespectful, a broken code of ethics. In the city councilman, you have, you have an audience. You have investors, you have homeowners, and you have students, and you have the city administration. You are there to conduct yourself in a manner and that the city of Pontiac residents has earned and earned and deserve to be held respected. You have shown investors, professionals, that your conduct, conduct is beneath and below the standards and the ethics of the city of Pontiac. The investor you, that offer you money, your conduct has been belittled to the city of Pontiac. You sit there and you ask, why are you being picked on? You are being observed by the character that you hold when you sit these women speaking. I don't know if you don't like black women. I don't know if it's just a culture thing. I don't know what it is. But now as we speak, your conduct is very unacceptable. We want change. We want improvement. And these past council people, may it be Deidre Waterman, may it be Gloria Miller, may it be any council that you, those are your fellow people. They earned that respect. You do not have to agree with them. It is not your job to judge. It's your jobs to accept and move on and make your own judgment call. But your physical reaction toward a councilperson or a past administration is very unacceptable. You represent Pontiac, and this is what your district deserved, but your district is Pontiac.
Thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
My first question before I get to you, Mr. Nicholson, I'm going to direct this right at you, because I tried to handle these things with you behind the camera, but now I'm going to put it out in the public. You picked the wrong woman. Mayor, first of all, what is the status of GURS? Because I am a member of GURS, what is going on? When will we have our next court case? We got people out there hurting for this four hundred dollars. Not so much me, but others. But still, it would be nice if you could speak on the status of GURS. Now, I too have some picture, I had some constituents send me some pictures of you when you speak of me. It's with such disgust. And I looked at the pictures over the week at home, and you brought me up last week. I asked the mayor, I didn't, I didn't come like Mr. I asked the mayor, I didn't, I didn't come like Mr. Elam did. I said, Mayor, is it a conflict? I didn't say you did own the business, but I do have you on camera saying that you did own the place. So what I did was you made me go into some research. And so you could tell me if I'm correct at the end of your closing comment. Mr. Tim Shepherd, that's on the Planning Commission, he owns your building. Pontiac, did you hear that? Mr. Shepherd owned about six, maybe five to seven properties downtown. You're downtown, right? You're one of the businesses. He's on the Planning Commission. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you a question. Is Mr. Shepherd, Tim Shepherd, does he live in the City of Pontiac? Because I read the ordinance, and where it states that you can have seven people on the council, one ex officio, that is Mr. McGinnis, he's allowed there. But if Mr. Shepherd is not a resident of the City of Pontiac, he can't be on the planning. I pulled that up too. I have the documentation here as well. I come prepared, Mr. Nicholson. Look, let me tell you something. I've been in this city, I'm old enough to be your mother. And I, and I am not ashamed to say that, 'cause God been good to me. The total disrespect that you give me, you can tell with the anguish in your face. You may not like me, but you don't have to, but you're gonna respect me. I'm a former elected official of this city. Deidre Waterman is the former mayor. Anybody know that when we was up there, we had disagreement. But you know what? I never demean her as a woman, as an African-American woman, because guess what? She is a woman just like we. We represent this city. You might didn't like the way we did it. Me and the mayor didn't agree on everything, probably anything, Mayor. But you know what? I respect her as a black woman, and she respects me. I demand that, I have noticed you, I've been coming down from day one of being on this council. You have an attitude problem when it comes to African-American women. There are others who've been to this post. You really, really get an anger in you. You have the nerve to say what I have done for this city. I'll put my record up against you day one. Day one, integrity, respect, good luck, good luck on finding someone. Other than I got a temper. I am sick and tired of you getting on to that podium at your closing comment, talking about me like I don't exist. I know what goes on at council. I know exactly what's going on. That's why I'm here, to inform the resident.
That concludes your time.
Pick your fights.
That concludes your time.
Mr. Larry Jasper.
That concludes, uh, public comment. President McGinnis.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to consider attorney-client privileged communication in accordance with? It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nick Nicholson. Uh, the resolution would consult with legal counsel regarding trial or settlement in connection with Oakland County Circuit Court, case number 2021-188116-NO, Cassidy and Sulis v. City of Pontiac and Curb Co., Inc. Um, that's relevant to MCL 15.2681E. Any discussion? Hearing or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
The motion carries. Uh, the city council will go into closed session at 9:08 PM.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we vote to come out of closed session. Roll call on adoption of the motion to come out of closed session, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We voted to come out of closed session at 9:45 PM. We are at City Council Communications. Oakland County Health Division is selling radon testing kits, half off in January, and otherwise you can get them all year round at the Health Division office in Pontiac at 1200 North Telegraph Road, Building 34E. Residents who are behind in paying their water bills or facing a shut-off can get help from a partnership between the Water Resources Commission and OLSA. That expires September 11th. That expires a temporary program, but you can get up to $1,500 for those that qualify, but expires in September. Call 248-209-2600 for more information. New dining option is open in downtown Pontiac, Oak House Deli, located at the Crowfoot, 1 South Saginaw. IM Pontiac Summer Internship Program for young people ages 16 to 24 has a required info session on February 1st at 4:00 PM. It's virtual. February 11th at 9:00 AM in person, or February 15th at 5:30 PM in person. Eight-week paid internships through Oakland County Michigan Works are available. Contact 248-276-1777 for more information. Nonprofit Coffee Chat is on February 3rd from 9:30 to 10:30, held at OLSA Pontiac, 196 Caesar Chavez, for local nonprofits serving in the city of Pontiac. Accent Pontiac has their winter showcase February 8th at 5:30 PM, held at Flagstar Strand Theater, 12 North Saginaw, and downtown Pontiac. Free admission. Pontiac Public Library Black History Month Essay Contest for students ages 7 to 12. Four-to-five-hundred-word essay, and number of students age 13 to 17, and 800-to-thousand-word essay on your favorite African-American author from the past or present. Deadline for submissions is February 10th. There are more announcements in Council Communications, available on the printed copy of the agenda here, in person, or online. Mayor's Office, Communications.
Thank you, President McGinnis. A few items. First of all, as I mentioned last week, there is an opportunity for community input regarding Galloway Lake Park improvements. I know I've mentioned for a couple of months now about the opportunity to provide that feedback via an electronic survey that is available on the city's website, but as I mentioned last week, there's an in-person opportunity to do so, and that is this Thursday, February 2nd, right here at City Hall at 5:30 PM. So please come on out and let your voice be heard about what sorts of improvements and amenities you'd like to see at Galloway Lake Park. In addition, we have an upcoming special event for Pontiac residents, and that is a city-organized daddy-and-daughter dance. This hearkens back to days gone by when the city had and operated and organized a daddy-daughter dance. That tradition had been interrupted for, oh, ten-plus years, when the city was no longer doing that, but we are reinstating it this year. And that event will be February 11th, coming up in just less than two weeks, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Lafayette Grand Ballroom. Tickets are $30 for both the father and the daughter. In other words, it's $30 total for the dad and the daughter. If a father has more than one daughter, it's an additional $10 for each additional daughter in attendance. In order to obtain tickets, one can call 248-758-3039. You can come here to City Hall and pay in person during business hours at the Treasurer's Office, or if you're unavailable to come during regular business hours, this next Tuesday, which is February 7th, you can come as late as 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM, to the Treasurer's Office. That's all I have in terms of announcements, Mr. President.
Closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Thank you. I wanted just to take a moment regarding the conflict-of-interest comments that were made by the public earlier. Anytime a conflict-of-interest allegation is made, we look into it, and that's how it came to pass that Councilwoman recused herself. It's also how it came to pass that a planning commissioner recused himself. And certainly, it will be looked into regarding councilmen as well. I do just want to observe that, in the case of the planning commissioner at least, it's because there was a direct potential financial benefit, because that planning commissioner owns real estate that is being leased to a conditionally-approved medical marijuana licensee. In the case of the city councilman, whose name was mentioned earlier this evening, the question of owning real property is a matter of public record with the county register of deeds. And as the councilman said tonight, the only property he owns is his house, which is not in downtown Pontiac. It's important to keep in mind that only direct financial interests constitute a conflict of interest. Just because somebody might live near where a dispensary is going to go, or owns a business near where a dispensary might go, does not in and of itself qualify as a conflict of interest, any more than the fact that city council people pay taxes constitutes a conflict of interest if they vote on a real estate tax levy or on an income tax levy. So I think it's important for us to think through what really constitutes a conflict of interest, because everybody, including all elected officials, are affected in some indirect way by what happens in our city. That alone does not constitute a conflict of interest, just to be clear. I also wanted to answer a couple of other questions that were raised. In particular, there was a question about whether a non-resident can be a planning commissioner, and the answer is yes. A non-resident can be a planning commissioner. In fact, there's a section of state law which is under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, and that section of state law specifically states that, and to be specific, Section 15 of the State of Michigan's Zoning Enabling Act, which is MCL 125.3815, and its subsection 4 within that section specifically allows for one member of a planning commission in a municipality with over 5,000 people, like Pontiac, to be a non-resident. That is separate from the provision under subsection 5 that speaks to ex officio members, like city council people, serving on the planning commission. And state law actually allows, as I understand it, for up to two ex officio members to be. In this case, we only have one ex officio member, which is Council President Mike McGinnis. But the ex officio question is separate from the non-resident question. A question was also asked about the status of gurs. The reason why you haven't heard any updates on that of late is because, as I think folks are aware, because we talked about it at least a couple of months ago, we have been in discussions with the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association about amending the settlement agreement, but that has effectively been put on hold because CIPRIA, the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association, insisted upon doing an actuarial study before they would continue those discussions and conversations about amending it. And we're still waiting on that actuarial study to be completed. So the only reason why, in the past couple of months, there has not been continued forward progress there is because of the City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association's absolute insistence on doing an actuarial study.
Councilman Nicholson, District 2.
Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk Doyle, District 2.
No comments, Mr. President.
Councilman Nicholson, District 2.
The only response I want to give specifically is if there was some sort of specific frustration or the reason why. My face is very, I give you that, totally. My face and my reactions when somebody frustrates me, or if I think that somebody is not telling the truth, or something like that, I definitely do react, and I need to. I'm a 35-year-old guy, right? I have maturing to-do, absolutely, and that will continue to happen, you know, every day. So certainly. I would ask, though, for the photographer, if we have, you know, take my picture the whole time. Don't take it, you know, just when it's convenient to be able to, you know, have that sort of conjecture, because I could promise you when Larry Jasper is speaking, my face does the same thing, because I react to the same things, the same things where it's statements of mistruth, or if somebody is being inappropriate, or if somebody's responding inappropriately. Even the members that sit up here, I respond the same way. Well, I work on my response and my facial expressions, absolutely, so I apologize for those moments. Want to say a specific thank you, huge, huge thank you to Jack McIntyre and Clarence Cohen in code enforcement. We've had some incredibly complex scenarios with landlords who are trying to get away with CFOs when they're not warranted, and I'll tell you right now, nothing is going over/under the radar with these guys. You know, things that have never been enforced before to the benefit of everybody on their street, it is just phenomenal. It's nice to be able to get a fully-formed response that I can take right back to the resident and have them say, "Awesome," instead of "What about?" So thank you very much to the Code Enforcement Department, and that's all I got.
Councilman Goodman, District 3.
No comment.
Councilwoman James, District 4.
Yes, I would like to say that our District 4 Community Council meeting that was scheduled for last Thursday evening was canceled due to the weather. Most of our constituents already know that, but, so I apologize for that, but we will have our February meeting, is scheduled for February 23rd at the New Mount Moriah International Church, and so we're looking forward to be able to present the same information that we had planned to at the January meeting. And in closing, I'd like to mention that, to Ms. Linda Simpson, who is an employee at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center, who is recuperating, I want to say, Linda, we are all hoping and praying that you are feeling better, and we're looking forward to you having a full, fully recovered. So I hope you are taking it easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Parker, District 5.
Thank you, brother president. I didn't have any comments today. Thank you. Everybody, have a good night.
Pro Tem, William A. Carrington, District 6.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to thank those that came out to our meeting tonight, and those that have been patient as we went into closed session as well. My name was invoked during public comment. Basically, don't like to address rumors or hearsay, but I will address it. First, I've been very vocal concerning Glenwood Plaza when it comes to blight, before I sat on this diocese and after I sat on this diocese. In no way would I tell anyone in a public meeting that I plan to get rid of Glenwood. Basically, I have said during my campaign is that Glenwood is here to stay because it was something that was done before I took office. That's been my statement throughout the 6th district. And next, I don't really have the power to make that happen anyway. That's a council decision. So when it comes to the medical marijuana, Glenwood definitely can open up, do whatever they need to do to make that happen for themselves. That decision does not, it does not include this council at all. This is something that was done, like I said last week, before we even took office. In saying that, good night.
Thank you. Mike McGinnis, Council District 7, no comment tonight for the sake of time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's City Council meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call on adjournment, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six J's, no N's.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:59 PM. Beat the buzzer.